Clock on the wall says it's minute past six, so it's time for the September City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission Meeting. I've called it to order, so we need a roll call, please ma'am.
Ms. Akers?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schroeder?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. Agenda, any additions, corrections, changes to the agenda? Staff, we good? Okay? Need a motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agenda as written?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus, thank you very much. Minutes from the August meeting. Any additions, corrections, changes? Complaints are authorized. We good? Staff, we good? Need a motion then, for approval?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you, and we'll do that by general consensus, thank you very much. Okay, this evening, we have four public hearings, the first of which I suspect most of you are here for. Just before we get underway, want to give you just a quick overview of how we do our public hearings. We will hear from the applicant, then we will hear a staff report. After that, we will open the public hearing to public input. We ask that you limit yourself to three minutes, and we do have a timer on you. If you want to go more than three minutes, two other people can give you their time, up to nine minutes, and then we're going to cut you off. So, when you come up to the podium, if you would, please read the statement at the podium, since this is a, this is for the record, and we want to make sure we have all our information accurate. So, without further ado, let's do our first public hearing.
This is case number PC 18-10, conditional use, on an application filed by Thomas McCash, 6864 Fallon Timber Drive, Dublin, Ohio, 43017. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for a medical marijuana retail dispensary to be located at 4370 Tonawanda Trail. The property is further described as Book Three, Page Seven, Parcel 170, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I'm quite sure we have plenty of representation, so if the applicant would like to make their presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Joseph R. Miller, 52 East Gay Street, Columbus. Thank you for having us back this evening. I'm joined tonight by representatives of Harvest and others, and I hope, at the end of the evening tonight, you agree with me when I say that we took the intervening time while this matter was tabled over the last thirty days to listen to your feedback, to listen to your questions, to listen to the citizens' thoughts, questions, and concerns. We listened, and we're coming back tonight with information, evidence that we believe allays those concerns, answers those questions, and gives you the comfort and the evidence you need to find that we are entitled to the conditional use permit. We took time in the last month to gather actual data as it relates to traffic, to compile evidence as it relates to the surrounding properties and their values, to demonstrate to you what we think is compelling evidence of the positive impact this would have on the neighborhood and the minimal impact that it has upon traffic in the area. You have before you a binder with our brief, with certain evidence, some of which we will cover this evening. I want to also let you know, we are mindful that you were generous with your time last month. We do not intend to retread old ground, but instead, present this new evidence to allay any concerns or questions that remain. I am joined tonight by Ben Kimbrough, a partner in Harvest. He will talk about how he came to be affiliated with Harvest, their operations, their security, their, quite frankly, their success in other states in carrying out this very unique model of medical cannabis dispensaries. Dr. Trout is here again this evening, you'll recall, Harvest Medical Director. He heard all of the public comment last month. We reviewed the record, we took a look at the specific questions and concerns of certain of the neighbors, and he's prepared to address those tonight. You'll also hear from Paul Noack of Harvest. We did our homework, you know, I understand there was some confusion about the letter of intent mentioning the possibility of 300 visits, that was a broad estimate. We went out and got actual hard data, that you'll hear testimony about tonight, that the actual visits to other dispensaries, and I mean several other dispensaries that Harvest owns and operates, are quite less, half that, an average of 150 ins and outs, 75 visits per day. We'll go through that in detail, as well as why Ohio may be different in terms of its laws, and those numbers may be lower here in Ohio. Likewise, we heard the concerns about the three county district for which we're a part, and we're prepared to visibly demonstrate why that should not be on anyone's list of concerns or thoughts. We'll go that much further and present to you tonight the expert testimony of Debbie Wilcox. Ms. Wilcox is an MAI appraiser. She's inspected the site, she's inspected the neighborhood. Based on her over thirty years of appraisal experience, she has both testified in the affidavit before you, but also will tonight, why she believes that this actually does satisfy the factor of whether or not the use will have any impact upon the surrounding properties. She believes far from having a material and substantial impact, which is your standard. Instead, she believes it will positively impact the surrounding properties. Finally, tonight, you'll hear from John Gallagher. John Gallagher is really one of the preeminent experts in traffic engineering in the state of Ohio. What he did was gather actual data as it relates to visits to two Harvest stores of comparable size in Arizona, as well as take Mr. Noack's data, gathered over the last thirty days, of actual visits to several Harvest stores in Arizona and Maryland, and looked at those actual numbers to determine what kind of impact this dispensary would have on the surrounding property. And it's important to note, he looked at these numbers from medical cannabis dispensaries only. He will discuss, we respect our neighbor to the south, Mr. Burris and his accounting firm, but we've received the study that he has had prepared. It is based on recreational and medical cannabis dispensaries, a completely different animal, with completely different counts, that we're prepared to demonstrate to you tonight. It's like comparing apples and baseballs. Instead, we believe that Mr. Gallagher's report looks at actual medical cannabis dispensaries, and that finds that they have a minimal impact to the surrounding roadways and properties, far less than uses already permitted in the B2 zoning district that could open on this property tomorrow. But we're willing to go further, listening to the residents, I think Mr. Gallagher will testify, this isn't necessary, it's not needed, but we listened to the residents. We're prepared to propose tonight, if it interests the Planning Commission, as a condition of approval, that we work with your engineering staff to determine whether they would like to see a right out only from the site. In other words, that you may only head south on Tonawanda Trail. We're open to that. And so I hope that you'll see, after the end of the evening, that we're willing to accommodate the thoughts and concerns of the residents, the questions that you had as well. And so, we believe at the end of the evening, the credible evidence and the record from persons withstanding will show that we satisfy the conditions for a conditional use permit under your code. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ben Kimbrough of Harvest, and let him take it from here.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, Commissioners. Ben Kimbrough, Director of Public Affairs for Harvest Incorporated, 3207 South Evanston Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma, 74105. First, I want to say to you that I consider it a privilege, and I'm grateful and appreciative to you for allowing me your time to address this body. I want to tell you a little bit about how I came to be a part of Harvest and the organization that's making an application in your community. Before I do that, I want to tell you that my other full-time job is that of an elected city councilman in Tulsa, Oklahoma. So, no one has greater respect for the job that you all are doing. I work very closely with our Planning Commission, and I admire the work that you do for your community. I know you certainly aren't doing it for the pay, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. That'll be the one thank you that you might get for this. My background is in direct and indirect support of foreign intelligence, and dealing primarily with narcotics-funded terrorist actors. I've done that for most of my adult life, until I found myself starting to get way too old to do what is definitely a young man's game. And grew up understanding the hazards, the dangers of drugs, believed in it. I grew up in the eighties, I took Nancy Reagan at her word. I wound up chasing bad guys all over the earth, I've gotten to work in fifty-one foreign countries. So, suffice it to say, working out of Narcotics Affairs Section, Bogota, I have some very, very clear ideas about what destructive things drugs can do. So how does a guy like me wind up going from that end of the spectrum to working for a medical cannabis company? I found myself very contently employed at an ENR 400, top 400 construction company a few years ago. In an executive team meeting, our CEO said, "Who in here knows anything about drugs?" Raised my hand, probably with the inappropriate answer to the question he was looking for. And the objective at that time was that we would design, engineer, and construct facilities for the cannabis industry. So I spent approximately a year of my life out on the West Coast, working with cannabis cultivators. And it was a very disappointing year, it was a very wasteful year, because at the end of the day, I came to realize that, since I'm the least patient human being I've ever met, we didn't have congruent business interests. I met a lot of wonderful people, I met a lot of smart, scientifically-driven folks that really understand this type of an agricultural play. But at the end of the day, most of these folks have operated in an outlaw environment for two or three decades, and you don't suddenly, one morning, wake up in a regulated environment and lose your outlaw mentality. And that is where we were incongruent. Most of these folks, and I'm not saying everyone in California is a flake, but certainly a few of them that I met absolutely are. They don't understand accountancy principles, they don't comply with common business practice and law, they don't read contracts, they don't sign contracts, they wouldn't comply with them if they did, they show up late for meetings, if at all, and I had a grievous problem with all of that. So, I came back to my team in Oklahoma, and I said, "We're not having any part of this, these folks. This is not something we want to involve ourselves in in any way." I say we pass. Unfortunately, by that time, I had become a cannabis policy nerd, and had started following what different states, not unlike Ohio, were doing to regulate. And I found a few states that seemed to really have done a capable job in their legislature at looking at some of the shortcomings or mistakes, challenges faced by other regulated states. And at that time, Arkansas, November of 2016, had, the voters had voted yes on Amendment 98 of their constitution, which allows for medical cannabis. And I said, you know, I went back to the same guys, I had told, "We are not doing this," and flip-flopped and said, "Absolutely, this is a place we can work. These are sensible regulations, similar in a lot of ways to what you all have here for the regime in Ohio. These are folks that I can work with. We're going to go into Arkansas." Long story short, we went into Arkansas, we started working on the application process, and I have an exclusive relationship with plants whereby I kill them. So, we're not going to rely on Ben Kimbrough to grow any of this stuff. I need a good operating partner, and I still had not been able to find one that I found was both capable and willing to work well in a regulated environment, which takes a lot of work. The construction company I worked with, about eighty-five percent of our revenue came from DOD. So I understand working in heavily regulated environments. This is that. It was at that time that I ran across a group of executives from Harvest, and immediately was endeared to them CPA attorney, former commander of Maryland State Police. These are business people. These were folks that had figured out how capable to work within a regulated environment. They speak my language, they understand accountancy principles, they understand standard business practices, they understand contracts. So, I had the privilege of working with them for a little more than a year on our Arkansas application. In that state, there are five cultivation licenses issued from ninety-five applicants. I'm proud to say that with my partnership at that time with Harvest, that we won two of five of those. Had to give one of them back, long story, I'll spare it over a drink sometime. So suffice it to say, as an organization philosophically and principled as they are, this is a great organization, and is one that I have the privilege of introducing you to, that I had the privilege last night of introducing to several Beaver Creek citizens. Last night, we had more than two hours worth of dialogue, and I thought it was great quality dialogue where folks were able to ask questions and get sincere, honest answers to everything they had asked. So, a little bit about Harvest, started in 2012. We are thirty-seven medical licenses, medical only, in seven states. That's actually expanded to a number of about, just under sixty licenses in thirteen states with provisional licenses, so those are ones that are in process. Cannot overstate the fact that we're medical only, we treat this as a treatment option. It is not a recreational approach that we take to it, hence, Dr. Trout, who's going to speak to you in a moment, who's our medical director. We care about security, we care about community partnerships, and providing a discreet, clean, patient-friendly environment for our patients to find treatment options. Our objective overarching all of that is to be a good community partner. I would not have gone to work for a company that does not have that tenant as a very high priority organization. We do a lot of charitable work, I'll dig into that in a little while. Our dispensaries are clean, they're safe. Once, once with your good judgment, we get this thing through, you're going to have one of the safest, most secure facilities in this part of, in your city. We take a very keen approach, a very informed approach, to the way we design and implement our security apparatus. It will be a secure site. Also, they're very clean, very nice-looking stores, they're discreet. There's the concern, same concern that I used to have, are there going to be green crosses and Bob Marley flags and pot leaves painted everywhere? Absolutely not, no way, that is not our philosophy. We treat this as a medical option, and not one that has culture or recreation woven into it. So under the standard that I like to use, would I bring my mom in here? With all of our dispensaries, yes, absolutely, they're clean, they're safe, they're well-lit. I've been in hundreds of dispensaries, not just in the United States, but elsewhere, and a lot of them, no, I would not bring my mom in. But I would be proud to with anything that we have. There is, they're well-lit, safe, clean, discreet. The patients come in, and they're never left alone, they're never left unattended. We are there to provide them good service, a quality of service. And we can only do that if we shine the light on it and allow them to be educated about the products that we sell. So, what we're asking for here in summary is the 4370 Tonawanda Trail location, which is Zoned B2, it is a community business use. I've talked with some of our residents here in Beaver Creek. You know, I assure you, we're going to do a respectful job in being a good community partner. We're going to leave at a sensible hour of night, not like a bar or nightclub, which would be allowed by right on this same property. We're deeply respectful, we want folks in that neighborhood to be our patients. So, far from wanting to turn them off, we're going to clean that site up. We look at about a half a million dollar investment in that. That includes resurfacing of a lot, some landscaping, a lot of other things that are needing to be done on that property, so. And I'm not going to jump into, you know, what that'll do for property values, but it is, it is a positive thing. So, we come to you with a ton of excitement about being a good community partner. We give charitably, we jump in with every community in which we operate, and make sure that we're being good listeners and being a good part of the community. And this process has been, I'm absolutely emblematic of that in terms of the way we've sought out to seek and inform folks. I understand it, it's very scary, I'm dealing with this as a city councillor in my home state right now. We've got a real runaway law, you all are fortunate to not have that. And fear of the unknown, a lot of times, allows us to get carried away with some types of concerns that we have simply just not seen in any of our sites, anywhere that we operate, that it'll increase crime, there's no evidence of that, in fact, it's a benefit. There is no, people have a concern, it was brought up last night, that there will be on-premise use of cannabis. In Ohio, it's a non-smoking state. Would somebody go in the parking lot and use the product? We won't allow it, it's not in our interest. We watch very carefully, we have cameras everywhere, and we don't allow that. It's not, it's not in my interest to violate a regulation. We want to jealously guard these licenses, not take a laissez-faire and shrug our shoulders when somebody's doing something in the parking lot that is not permissible. The fact is, our experience shows that very few people actually make those types of violations. So, we've listened, we're excited to be here, we're excited to partner with you. If there are any questions of me, I'm happy to, I'm happy to take those from you, or later when you get into discussion with the body. I thank you for your time, and again, I'm sensitive and appreciate the difficulty of making tough decisions where everybody, not everybody walks away happy, so thank you all. With that, I get to introduce Dr. Trout.
Yes, we're going to have Dr. Trout come up, I just wanted to amplify one of Ben's comments, because I failed to mention it. We actually, as part of this kind of data gathering interim period, we had a traffic study prepared, as I mentioned, that you'll hear about, that we shared with the neighboring property owner. We also last night had a community forum, just to try to hear what people's concerns are and answer questions, to listen. And we are gratified to have several people, including a few in attendance tonight, appear there, as well as Mayor Stone dropped by, former Mayor Jarvis. It was an excellent exchange of information, and I would call it the start of a dialogue. We're here tonight asking for your affirmative vote, but we're not going to stop listening and making accommodations after we hopefully receive that approval. Instead, we want to partner with this community. So I wanted to explain that step we also took in the last thirty days. With that, as I mentioned, Dr. Trout would like to address some specific concerns of residents we heard last month.
Hello, my name's Dr. William Trout, thank you. I'd just like to take a little time to address some of the concerns that were brought up at the last community hearing. First of all, I'd like to reiterate what a special plant medicine cannabis is. I'd like to direct your attention to this journal published in the British Journal of Pharmacology, 2011, "Taming THC: Potential Cannabis Synergy and Fetal Cannabinoid-Turpanoid Entourage Effect." This was published by Dr. Ethan B. Russo, a medical doctor who was, is the senior medical advisor for GW Pharmaceuticals. GW Pharmaceuticals is researching and working on plant-derived pharmaceutical medicines. Because what they found in their studies is that this cannabis plant has up to a hundred of these cannabinoids, and many terpenoids and other components that work in a synergistic manner, or an entourage effect. And what they have found is that when all of these components are found together in the medicine, it actually improves the effectiveness of this medicine, and improves the clinical applications, or broadens the clinical applications that it can be used for. They've also shown that many of these components actually tone down the psychoactive effect of THC, therefore reducing the psychoactive side effects that can come with synthetic cannabinoid medicines. So again, this journal article does a very good job to help explain why this cannabis plant medicine is very successfully filling a gap that synthetic pharmaceuticals have not been able to do. I'd also like to take a look at the Centers for Disease Control statistics on drug overdoses. Number one, because this is very important to our communities right now. And number two, after looking back at the transcripts from last month, I don't think I did the best job at demonstrating these facts. So let's look at the specific statistics. Drug overdose is now the number one cause of accidental death in the United States. More than seventy-two thousand overdose deaths were reported in 2017. Of these seventy-two thousand drug overdose deaths, not one of them was due to cannabis, not one of them. In fact, the main driver of these overdose deaths right now in the United States are these synthetic opiates, such as fentanyl. The CDC also lists the state of Ohio having the second highest number of drug overdose deaths reported in 2016. I'd like to bring your attention to this study published in the Journal of American Medical Association, Internal Medicine, 2014, "Medical Cannabis Laws and Opioid Analgesic Overdose Mortality in the United States." And what they saw is the states that have medical cannabis laws have a significant lower overdose mortality rate on these opiate medicines. This is becoming an alternative to many of these opiate analgesic medicines, and it's allowing our physicians another tool in their toolbox. This is a pair of studies that was published within the last several months in the Journal of American Medical Association, and it also shows that states that have medical cannabis laws, the doctors are prescribing less of these opiate pain medications. And in fact, they're seeing that particularly strong in states and communities that allow access to medical cannabis dispensaries. So it's the access to the medical cannabis and these dispensaries that is driving these improvements and these numbers we're looking at. This is another study I'd like to take a look at, and particularly because it has a great importance to the local community that this dispensary would be located in. This is a study that came out of Israel, it was published by Zach Klein, and he actually does documentaries, there's a video documentary of this online. If you get the chance, I recommend that you pull it up, it is quite powerful. But what they're doing is looking at cannabis use in a nursing home setting. They did a study with thirty-six patients in this assisted care living facility, and what they found is that they saw a decrease of the consumption of conventional medications together with significant health improvement when they were using medical cannabis. And I'd like to look specifically at some of the results that they saw with these patients. Great pain relief, discontinuation of pain medications, improvement of appetite, weight gain, improved eating ability, no need for a feeding tube, decrease in muscle contraction and spasticity, improved sleep and decrease of sleeping pills. Enema treatments that were part of the routine ward almost completely halted for these patients. They were able to discontinue a total of thirty-nine different medications. So it's not just reducing the amount of opiate pain medications that doctors are prescribing, but it's allowing them an alternative for many of the pharmaceuticals that have much more concerning side effects. And again, there is an assisted care facility, a large assisted care facility right across the street from the location of this dispensary, right next to this dispensary. These individuals have the ability to get great improvement in their quality of life with access to these medicines. Last thing, I'd like to look again at some more safety concerns that were brought up at the community hearing last month. And I know there is a lot of fear with the unknown, but I do want to remind everybody that cannabis is not a new medicine. This was part of our American medical pharmacopoeia right up until the late 1930s. Many cannabis medicines were available, it was our main cash crop. We've had states now that have had medical cannabis laws since 1998. We're up to thirty states that have medical cannabis laws. We do have data to... We do have data to look at. We don't have to be afraid of the unknown. We have data. And I'd like to bring your attention to this study, it was published in the American Journal of Public Health, February 2017, "U.S. Traffic Fatalities and Their Relationship to Medical Marijuana Laws." And their conclusion, after looking at all the mortality and traffic accident statistics, is that these medical marijuana laws are actually associated with a decrease in traffic fatalities. And when the dispensaries were available and accessible, they saw a greater decrease in these traffic fatalities. This was very powerful in the age group from 25 to 44 years old, seeing these decrease in traffic fatalities. Now, what they suggest, they're not suggesting that cannabis is some drug performance or performance-enhancing drug. What they're suggesting is that cannabis is an alternative to many of the substances that are leading to these traffic accidents, specifically alcohol. Again, drug overdose is now the number-one leading cause of accidental death in the United States. Traffic accidents are the number-two leading cause of accidental death in the United States, and many of those are due to alcohol consumption. And what the studies are showing is that when cannabis is accessible and available, it is reducing the amount of consumption of alcohol and these other substances, and we are seeing a reduce in the fatal traffic accidents in these states that have medical cannabis laws and dispensaries. Furthermore, within the last few months, and I think this really drives home the point on safety, in the last few months, we saw on the news that the director of the Health Department in New York has recommended full legalization of cannabis to the governor of New York. And he went and looked at all the safety concerns that communities are bringing up like this one. He looked at all the data that's available. He looked at the safety profile of cannabis and the benefits, and came to the conclusion that the benefit and the safety of cannabis far outweighs any of the risks that have been brought up to our communities, far outweighs those risks. And again, if anybody has any further questions for me about any of these, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Trout. The Planning Commission members are very generous with their time. We appreciate it. I want to move now into hard evidence specifically related to the two factors for your consideration tonight, whether this use would have a substantial or material detriment to the surrounding properties, and whether the existing roadway infrastructure can handle the traffic created by the proposed use. First, I'd like to ask Paul Noack, the Vice President of Design and Construction for Harvest, to come forward. Mr. Noack was here last month with you, and if you would indulge me, I'd like to ask him some questions to explain the work that he's done in the intervening time. Some of it is in the PowerPoint display before you, which we'll leave with the clerk tonight. Other of it is incorporated, sorry, is incorporated within the brief before you. So, why don't I stand on this side with my apologies to the folks behind me? Paul, you were here last month. You heard testimony regarding a letter of intent that was submitted estimating 300 potential trips to this site daily.
Yes.
Can you speak to that or describe what that was, and what you've done in response to questions of the Planning Commission?
Sure. And Joe, you alluded to it earlier when we started, but the 300-count figure that was in the LOI that was submitted was based on, was very general and broad, not based on hard data, and frankly, we didn't do a particularly great job putting that together. We also hadn't considered the laws of the state of Ohio. So, in response to that, we've gone back, and we have the opportunity to look at the actual data from facilities that are similar in size and similar, what we think is similar in proximity to the neighborhood and population, to what we're looking at here in Beaver Creek.
And would you describe what the Planning Commission members are seeing in this slide entitled Patient Counts, and how that data was collected?
Sure. So, these are six facilities that we currently operate. The first five in Arizona, and the last on the far right is Maryland in Rockville, about, I don't know, six or seven miles from the DC border. This data was taken from July 2018, so it's as current as it could possibly be, and represents the average number of patients that visit our dispensaries.
During July, the folks on-site counted patient visits for each day of the week and tabulated that data throughout the month?
Right. So, when a patient enters any of our dispensaries, you know, again, these are medical dispensaries, so they're checked into our system, we verify that their card is current, verify their identification. So, our tracking systems and, you know, patient tracking system has all of that data. So, we pulled it from July.
And are these stores, how do they range in size as compared to the proposed location here in Beaver Creek?
So, they range in size from the smallest being right at 1,300 square feet, to the largest being 5,600 square feet. The size of the proposed dispensary in Beaver Creek, I believe, is 3,900?
I believe it's actually 2,900.
Okay. Sorry, 2,900.
We shorthanded it at 3,000 square feet. And so, the average of that data equated to 75 patients per day?
Yes.
Did you also, we'll hear from a traffic expert later, Mr. Gallagher, but did you assist Mr. Gallagher and his team in getting actual traffic counts, ins and outs, from two Harvest locations?
Yes. So, we gave them access to two of our locations. Those locations were selected for, you know, they're similar in size, and also, they have a parking lot that is solely used for the dispensary, so that we weren't, that it could be as clear as possible, the data coming from the car counts, and it's not possible for someone to park in a neighboring, in a neighboring, in front of a neighboring suite and walk over, and conversely, someone wouldn't be able to park in our lot and walk over to a different suite.
And you mentioned a moment ago that there may be differences in Ohio law that perhaps would lead to even less traffic on-site, or that the 75 average patient visits per day is conservative. Could you describe for the Commission what you meant by that?
Sure. So, unfortunately, we're not able to pull actual data from dispensaries operating in Ohio. You know, that's to come. Arizona and Maryland are similar in, you know, restricted licensing to this program here. So, but the difference is that in Arizona, patients are permitted to purchase a 14-day allotment of cannabis. In Maryland, patients are permitted to purchase up to 30-day, a 30-day allotment of cannabis. Here in Ohio, it's a 90-day allotment. So, we feel that taking a straight comparison to Arizona or Maryland is, again, even more conservative than what we could expect. And we would imagine that many patients would take advantage of the opportunity to purchase their full allotment and to visit, reducing it to up to a sixth or a third, or what we're seeing in other locations.
Thank you, Mr. Noack.
Thank you.
And so, in the next slide, I just simply wanted to segue into the specific conditional use requirements. As you'll recall, we satisfy the first. The second is what I alluded to a moment ago, that the proposed use will not have a substantial or material detrimental effect, not just a detrimental effect, but a substantial or material one, on surrounding properties. Ms. Wilcox, an appraiser, will testify in a moment concerning that factor. And then likewise, just as Mr. Noack's testimony bears upon the third factor, we'll present the testimony of Mr. Gallagher momentarily, as it relates to whether the existing street network can handle the vehicular traffic without significant adverse effect. So, at this time, I'd ask Debbie Wilcox to come forward. Ms. Wilcox, if you would, please introduce yourself to the members of the Planning Commission, and what your current occupation is.
Hi. My name's Debbie Wilcox. I'm a real estate appraiser and consultant in the state of Ohio and several other states.
And how long have you been appraising property?
Since 1984, about 34 years.
Do you hold any professional designations?
Yes. I have the MAI designation, which is a real estate appraisal designation, a CCIM designation, which is a Certified Commercial Investment Member in the state of Ohio, and then I belong to several real estate boards and MLS services.
And if it's helpful to the Commission members, the affidavit of Mr. Noack is attached to the brief. There is an affidavit of Ms. Wilcox that contains her CV, so I'll move past that. And let me ask you, Ms. Wilcox, you were asked to offer your expert opinions in this matter. Specifically, could you describe to the Commission what you were asked to evaluate? Okay, very good. Sorry.
Yes. I was asked to take a look at the property, the building itself, the real estate itself. Then I was asked to look at the surrounding area, and any ideas or thoughts that I had as to what I thought the proposed use would do to property values, either positively or negatively.
So, you visited the site?
I did.
You inspected the neighborhood?
I did.
Did you speak with representatives of Harvest?
Yes. I spoke with representatives of Harvest, questioned them extensively about the facility itself. I have some firsthand knowledge of the whole CBD idea because of some personal friends and things like that. And so, I was able to communicate my questions as to what I thought this would either bring to the community or detract from the community.
And did you likewise review the zoning code for the city of Beaver Creek?
I did. I actually owned part of a company in Dayton several years ago, and I've appraised all over the state of Ohio, including Beaver Creek. The B2 zoning certainly allows this particular use, but it also allows more intense uses, and we'll get into what I think about what would be usable there in a minute.
Okay. Well, then, let's launch right into that substance. Let me ask you and take this answer where it needs to go. Will Harvest dispensary have a detrimental effect on surrounding properties?
No. It's my opinion that it will, the current state of the building, vacant and in somewhat disrepair, I believe that the Harvest plans for the property will bring back the value to the property, therefore bringing back value to the surrounding area as well. I really envision with the nursing home across the street, I know there's an accounting office to the south, but it's almost getting a feel, maybe a medical campus area, where we, an office building, a medical office building, the medical marijuana dispensary, similar to a compound pharmacy, maybe an eye doctor, those kinds of uses would be very logical for this property.
So, you do not see it in conflict with the surrounding properties?
Not at all. I think it'll bring value, first of all, physically, when it's brought back to what it was before and could be again, and it'd also improve the value of the surrounding area because of that.
And so, then likewise, I think I know the answer to this question based on your prior answers, but will it cause any diminishment to property values in the area?
No. It's my opinion that it will not. It will help the property values in the area and actually maybe bring other similar uses to the area that would be compatible with it.
Now, you're aware of a residential area to the north of this property?
Yes.
Do your opinions apply equally to that surrounding neighborhood, and if so, why?
Well, I drove through the area, and I'd actually been familiar with the area for some other work that I've done. I think that it will help the area just because the building, the property itself, will be cleaned up, will be brought back to a better condition, which will help all the values, including the residential area.
And you base these opinions upon your review of materials, research in this matter, and your over 30 years of appraisal experience?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Ms. Wilcox.
You're welcome.
Finally, members of the Planning Commission, I would ask to call John Gallagher up to testify. Mr. Gallagher, good evening. Would you please introduce yourself and describe your occupation for the members of the Planning Commission?
My name is John Gallagher. I'm the Director of Planning and Traffic Engineering for Carpenter-Marty Transportation in Columbus, Ohio.
How long have you been a traffic engineer?
29 years.
And what is the business or the work of a traffic engineer?
It can be very broad, but basically, it's analysis of existing traffic. We do work for agencies such as yourself, as well as private people to analyze traffic, try to improve traffic, diagnose problems exist now, study safety, make safety recommendations.
Do you do work for both governmental entities and private developers?
Yes. Probably 90% of our business is for agencies such as yourself, Department of Transportation, FHWA.
And do you hold any advanced degrees or professional designations?
I have an undergraduate engineering degree from University of Kentucky. I have a master's degree from Ohio State University.
You were asked to offer certain expert opinions in this matter?
Yes.
We're going to get real close, Mr. Gallagher.
Okay.
I'm going to stay close to this microphone. And you prepared a report, is that correct?
Correct.
I see you have a copy of your report here. That report is included within your binders as Exhibit 4, I believe, if you care to follow along. But what I would ask you first, before we talk about your conclusions, first, most generally, what were you asked to opine on in this matter?
We were asked to take a look at the medical dispensary and the surrounding community to determine whether it was going to have any significant detrimental effect.
Then let's talk about, if you could just describe for the Planning Commission members, what you did in order to formulate your opinions. What was the research? What was the data? What did you do in order to come to conclusions in this matter?
We did several things. We visited the site a couple different times for a total of about five and a half to six hours, observed traffic in the neighborhood, observed traffic outside the neighborhood, in the commercial area, and on the main thoroughfares. We collected data from various different sources about what a medical-only dispensary might generate of this size. We also looked at data, patient count data, that was provided by Harvest.
Let me stop you there. Did you yourself then independently decide to collect data as it relates to Harvest patient visits and traffic at Harvest sites?
We did. We were also asked to review the Burris report, and we noticed in the Burris report that the data that we utilized came from two different areas. One was Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is generally the proper way to do a traffic study, but it included recreational data as well. They also used some data that was collected by a consulting firm, not in Ohio, called SPAC Consulting, that's a fairly well-known consulting firm. And Mr. SPAC confirmed that that was also, those counts were taken from dispensaries that also had recreational.
And so, we're respectable of our neighbors to the south, Mr. Burris, in the report that he commissioned, but was the fact that that report relied upon recreational and medical marijuana traffic counts significant to you?
Yeah, it just doesn't, you know, it just, from the start, it doesn't represent what we expect to occur at marijuana-only facility.
For medically?
Yeah. To kind of break this down into layman's terms, it's kind of, I think, you know, the mom-pa pharmacy is kind of almost gone, but a pharmacy that's just pharmacy-only, we used to have those, they generated very little traffic, and they sold all drugs. This is basically a pharmacy that sells one drug. So, you can imagine, you know, the slight amount of traffic we would expect at such a facility.
So, you took into account the data provided to you by Harvest, but then you also contracted to have traffic counts done at two specific sites in Arizona for Harvest?
Yes.
What did you conclude?
That, it confirmed what we suspected, that the recreational and medical data was well overestimating what's typically, or currently being generated at two similar facilities in Arizona of Harvest.
We heard Mr. Noack testify earlier about 75 average patient visits per day. If you would back up just a moment. What does this slide reflect in terms of the separate counts that you had performed at two existing Harvest sites?
Let me look at which table this is here.
I made it especially easy to read in six-point font.
The first two lines are the AM and AM entry and exits, and the PM entry and exits from the counted facilities in Arizona. Now, you'll note that the facility sizes are a couple hundred square feet smaller than the 2,900 proposed, which is the bottom line. Those numbers have been scaled up proportionally to represent a 2,900-square-foot facility.
And describe, I know the Planning Commission members hear applications all the time, and are probably well-familiar, so forgive me, but describe the significance of AM/PM peak hour data analysis because of its real impact upon traffic at its busiest times.
Yeah. That, you know, a traffic impact study typically looks at AM and PM peak hours, as you guys, I'm sure, are aware, because that's when the heaviest network traffic is going on, and that's when the biggest impact would come from additional traffic.
And so, looking at this data, what effect, if any, would this trip data during the AM and PM? AM and PM peak hour have upon traffic in the area?
I'd expect this to have next-to-zero traffic impact. I'm sure, as you guys are used to seeing TISs every other meeting probably, that have 50 to 1,000 in some of those boxes, depending on the uses. You know, I welcome you to compare this to, you know, any other traffic impact studies you've looked at in the area and even approved of in the area. That I have a hard time in my 29-year career finding another facility that produced traffic this low. There are facilities that we've looked at that are minor generators like this, but this is, for the traffic engineering world, next to a street like Indian Ripple, this is insignificant.
If we look at the next slide, this is the data that Mr. Noack described and that you took into account. Would you describe what that 75 patients-per-day data meant to you as a traffic engineer, and what, if any, effect that has upon your conclusions?
Yeah, we utilize this data to kind of double-check what was counted in Arizona to verify that the data we collected that was, you know, a small percentage of what was utilized in the Burris report was actually good data, and the patient data firms that up. You know, 75 patients a day is about what we'd expect with the small number of vehicle trips that we were, that we collected in Arizona.
And so, let me ask you then, based upon your review of this data and your 29 years of engineering experience, visits to the site and other research, will this number have any meaningful impact upon traffic in the area?
No, for, you know, if we referred to these as customers, you know, this is a retail establishment somewhat, this is, you know, a very, very small amount of customers.
And if we look at the next slide, did you also look at other permitted uses in the B2 district, permitted uses, and what average daily trips they generate based upon that ITE data?
We did, and this is data that's right out of our report. You can see, you know, with the 150, roughly 150 trips expected daily for the Harvest store, you can see all these uses that are currently permitted by the zoning that are significantly more up to a scary amount by a convenience store.
That's permitted for this site today.
Correct.
Did you also evaluate the number of parking spaces that would be necessary on-site? What did you find and how?
We did. As there's a trip generation manual, I'm sure you're well aware, there's also an ITE parking manual that we reference to calculate traffic for a facility, and we, medical marijuana is a new use to ITE. They don't have any parking data on that. We used pharmacy without drive-through land use, which most pharmacies sell more than just drugs, so we expect this could be slightly overestimated, but it shows a 2,900-square-foot facility would need seven parking spaces. The current site has 12, I believe.
So based on those standards and that data, it's actually overparked?
Yes. And that, that parking generation from that includes parking necessary for employees, deliveries, all that. That's not just customers, that's parking for full use.
The last month, the Commission heard concerns and comments from neighbors about how the Harvest dispensary is the dispensary for a three-county district. Did you evaluate whether Harvest's geographic location in Ohio may have some effect or impact upon traffic beyond what these daily trips would otherwise indicate?
We did.
Okay. Could you describe what the Commission is seeing here and what conclusions were reached?
The blue dot is, you know, an indication of where we are currently in Beaver Creek. The red facilities are plotted locations of other dispensaries in Ohio.
And there are three dispensaries within a 10-mile radius of this one, and seven dispensaries within a 20-mile radius?
Correct.
Now, if we look at Madison County, I, there are actually six dispensaries in contiguous Franklin County that those residents could go to?
Correct.
And Fayette County is, I think objectively, everyone would agree, is a sparsely populated county. Are they approximately equidistant to the Franklin County dispensaries as they would be to the Green County?
Roughly.
Okay. So, in your professional opinion, does that fact present any significant impact upon traffic?
Yeah, my understanding, there was concerns about this drawing from a wider region, and you can see with the dispensaries that exist are in the heavier populated counties. The counties that don't have dispensaries are quite rural, so we expect our trip generation to be fairly accurate. We'll probably draw less from Montgomery and Clark than other dispensaries. We may draw a few more from the other ones that don't have dispensaries. We expect it to be a wash.
Now, you visited the site on Tonawanda Trail, is that correct?
Correct.
What other observations did you make while you were in the area?
Tonawanda, for a residential neighborhood, has a surprisingly low amount of traffic. I commend the city on how they were able to not have that be a pass-through route for people in the area, but it doesn't seem to be performing that way. It's got more than adequate capacity to handle, you know, the minor amount of people that could potentially make a left out of there, to go up to county line, and then to Indian Ripple, and back to the freeway. Other things we observed as well, one of the things out of the Burris report was a claim that if you're going towards the freeway on Indian Ripple and you want to make a left to go north and towards the area that we're talking about, that that would, that left turn movement is failing or would have significant delay. What we were able to do was take their data, put it in the same software they used, get similar results, and verify that they didn't go through the procedure that you have to go through when you have an upstream signal, which the freeway signal was just up the hill. The reason that has to be taken into account is that the software will assume completely random arrival. If you don't make that correction in the software, if the correction's made in the software, you see what we observed at the site, is that you go, you sit for a little bit, it's definitely not failing or level Service F until the light turns up the road, and then you're able to get a gap and you get in.
And so, I want to talk about the Burris report in detail in a moment, but you observed the village, the village at the Green Assisted Living Center in the area as well?
Yeah, we did. We also obtained the number of units at that facility and went into the trip generation manual for that, and it, the traffic that it's going to produce is going to be far in excess, far in excess of what this facility is.
And so, you heard my representation in the opening statement to the members of the Planning Commission, that Harvest would be more than happy to consider and work with engineering staff if they are interested in a right out from the southern end of the Harvest property. Is that significant to you?
You know, while it's great that everybody's willing to work together, you know, my opinion is that the small amount of lefts that are going to come out of here, it's probably not necessary, in my opinion, you know, because I'm, you know, I've already testified that, you know, it's not going to have a significant effect on Tonawanda, so, and that was assuming full movement driveway. So if it was limited, it would just make it that much better for the neighborhood, of course.
So, again, respecting everyone's point of view and the Burris firm to the south, we did, however, ask you to review and critique the report prepared for them, the Burris traffic impact study. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you touched upon a moment ago about some of the thoughts and conclusions you reached about the Burris traffic impact study. Would you please describe those for the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I'll just kind of follow down through the main points that are in my report as far as the review of this goes. Overall, I think, I think your conditional-use zoning code uses the phrase "significant impact" as far as traffic goes. Like I testified, I don't expect, I have this, you know, I'll testify that it's probably going to have minimal effect, nowhere close to significant, but if we go down through the, some of the things that were discovered in the Burris report, we already talked about the dispensary is going to generate significantly less than what was seen in the Burris report.
And why don't you describe, we'll put it up on the screen, but why don't you describe for the Commission the difference in numbers if you start looking at recreational dispensaries versus what Harvest's own experience across several stores has been in terms of the counts?
Like I had stated earlier, you know, medical marijuana is a new use, ITE doesn't have a lot of data. They do have more traffic data, but they, they have a warning in some of their uses that you, it's a small amount of data, so you've got to use it with a grain of salt. So, you know, I commend CESO for going out and trying to find some additional uses, and they stumbled upon the counts done by SPAC. But if we can go back to the, I think it was the prior slide?
It was.
We found on, Mike is Mike SPAC, who's the president of that and owner of that consulting firm, we found this on his blog, which is CESO reaching out to Mike to say, hey, we're doing this thing in Ohio, but it's medical only. What are yours? And he's saying, these are medical and recreational, and you can see that Mike even says, it's going to produce more traffic than...
I can read it. I think, imagine a site that only filled prescriptions would have lower trip generation.
Yeah, so, in a roundabout way, you've got a third traffic engineer's opinion.
And so, what, if any, effect then did, looking at very high recreational dispensary numbers, how did that impact the conclusions set forth in the Burris traffic impact study?
It obviously, you know, the Burris report, I'd have to say, is overestimating everything by a factor of about five, to the point where, you know, I would recommend that it not be used for any decision-making or further analysis purposes.
Like, I'll get my numbers wrong, but if I recall correctly, the actual Harvest data predicts that there would be six entries during the AM peak hour, no exits?
Oh, yeah.
And then?
Entry, no, six in, six out during AM.
And then in the PM peak hour, it was something more on the order of magnitude of 20 or 21 versus 50?
21 in, 23 out, where you can, you can see the numbers above that were in the Burris report, 17 to 20 in and out for AM. You know, and you can see the much, much more significant numbers. We're predicting it's probably going to be about half.
Well, let's go to the next slide, because I think that kind of makes your point for you, that in terms of the actual daily trips that Harvest experiences versus what's set forth in the Burris report.
Yeah.
Is that what you were referring to when you said they're on an order of magnitude of five times as many trips?
Yeah, the top line is the Harvest facility that we're testifying about tonight and the 150 total patient visits, and I'll be the first to admit, patient visits don't exactly correlate to vehicle trips, but it gives us some level of scale. It would be, you know, plus or minus a few, but you can see from the SPAC data, you know, it's daily, it's well in excess of the data that was collected at the facilities that were medical only, as well as the ITE data is the bottom line there, and it is also very high, much, much, much more than what we expected, and that's what was used in the Burris report.
And so, if you have your choice as a traffic engineer, would you rather use ITE data from an incorrect classification or actual traffic counts?
No, if you read in the front of the trip generation manual, they even make the statement that when actual data can be used, that should be more heavily relied upon.
Okay. And so, did the Burris report, in your expert opinion, have other flaws or errors?
Yeah, there were, there were some other things. We already talked about the procedure and the software when they analyzed the left turn from Indian Ripple onto, onto this area in question, so that, that was one thing. And not accounting for the upstream signal. There were also some, some factors that aren't generally the way we do things in Ohio. When you use traffic analysis, capacity analysis software, ODOT's requirement, and you will see the reference in the report to where in the ODOT manual it calls that out, you typically use this one specific default factor. It's actually the default of the, the software. And the Burris report uses the peak hour factor out of the counts. Now, that, the peak hour factors vary wildly from day to day, so you, at least in Ohio, we do not use a peak hour factor that's based on a one-day-of count, which was done at this, but they did use the default value when they, in reference to the Harvest data.
So very quickly, looking at the next slide, because I think you touched upon some of these, what are some other observations from the field?
I think I stated this before, that the Tonawanda Trail volumes are extremely low, even, even for a neighborhood. It's more sleepy than I expected it to be with, with how many homes are there.
And if we look at the last slide, let me ask you kind of, ultimately, your conclusion, Mr. Gallagher, based upon your research, your findings, your analysis, your 29 years of experience in the traffic engineering field, what is your conclusion related to Harvest proposed dispensary's effect on traffic?
We expect it to have a minor effect on traffic, probably, once this has been there eight to 12 months, people won't even notice that there's been a difference. You know, 70 vehicles a day is, you know, a vehicle every several minutes, not what we're used to, where it's 10, 20, 100 coming by in a minute. We're talking about a vehicle coming and several minutes going by, and then another vehicle, so it's, it's very dispersed traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. This is the part where I use the words "in conclusion," and everyone breathes a sigh of relief. No, I would just briefly want to submit to you that there is overwhelming credible evidence that supports satisfaction of each of the factors for conditional use under your code, in fact, that this is far less intrusive than certain permitted uses and associated trips. I have to do a duty to my client, and I apologize, we've made reference to it in the brief, that in fact, your code cannot trump state law. We've submitted for a license for this location, received it from the Board of Pharmacy after a rigorous review, and that fact, to deny this application based on that evidence is extremely problematic for the city. So too the idea that 70,000 square feet can be approved across the street, finding no material impact on traffic versus this 2,900-square-feet store would present real problems. What is more, a drugstore is permitted on the site today, a bar, tavern, a beer-and-wine carryout and convenience store. We have a right to be treated fairly, as I know you will, and not arbitrarily. But regardless, I think this is, this permit is deserved on the merits before you tonight. We're fortunate, Beaver Creek is fortunate, that if this use is permitted, and it is conditionally permitted, the city made that decision. I think Beaver Creek is fortunate to have an operator like Harvest, which has known safe and secure dispensaries. You heard last month about over 100,000 transactions without a single security incident, that they already have 37 licenses in seven states. This may be the unknown for the city, and I appreciate that fact, but it is known to these operators, and I think that having a known quantity like that with experience in the industry will serve this community well. We believe that we've demonstrated that there is not a significant substantial or material detriment to the surrounding properties. In fact, you heard about the significant investment that Harvest will make in the property, and certainly, I believe, the last testimony satisfies the fact that there will, this use can be accommodated by the existing roadway system. To look at actual traffic counts at actual Harvest locations, to look only at medical cannabis, is the only reliable evidence to look at the impact of traffic. And so too, we are glad we were given the time to collect that actual data rather than speculate based on recreational dispensary data, and to look at the low nearby dispensaries to address your concern about the three-county area, and we believe that clearly this won't be the mega-attraction superstore that people might otherwise think, but instead simply be one of several in the area servicing the public with an important need that Ohio has determined its citizens are entitled to. So with that, I would submit that Harvest will be an asset, not a detriment to this community, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for an extremely complete report. Now it's staff's turn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As was presented by the applicant this evening, there
this evening, there was some additional information presented in your packets for your consideration. First was the CESO report referred to as Burris Report in the applicant's presentation. There's also a brief or some some information in your packet that was put together that was sent to you yesterday that was submitted by the applicant along with their traffic study. We do have Jeff Borman, our CED engineer, here to answer any questions you might have related to some of the information that was presented tonight, or some of the information you might find in either one or both of the reports that was submitted to you for your view. Other than that, we have nothing to add, other than the consideration of the condition that they proposed maybe on the table for limiting the traffic movement in and out of the Tonawanda site to limiting it to a right turn only. So that's something we need to discuss and add into the conditions if that's your preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's public hearing time. In the interests of time, rather than having each person swear themselves in, if anyone who even thinks they may want to speak, if you will please stand, I'm going to swear you all in at once. You know the drill, raise your right hand. Aye and state your name.
Aye.
That sounds good. Do swear and affirm to tell the truth.
Do swear and affirm to tell the truth.
In all matters before this commission.
No matters before this commission.
Thank you. You may sit down. Look at all the time we've saved. Okay, remember the rules. Three minutes, please. We got a timer on you. And try to keep it to what we're discussing tonight, and that is the suitability of this as a conditional use. We're not talking about marijuana. We are talking about conditional use of a facility. So please try to limit it to that, because the the state of Ohio and the voters in Ohio have passed a medical marijuana law. That train's left the station. So let's let's keep it to our conditional use at this site in Beaver Creek. And somebody's going to go first. And if you would, when you come forward, you don't need to swear yourself in.
Gotcha.
Just just state your name and your address for the record.
Oh, you don't remember who I am?
I'm Mike.
Okay. I am Chuck, Charles Miller, 4301 Tonawanda Trail. Okay? And just call me Captain Obvious tonight. We're just going to talk about traffic and those kind of things. I had made mention about squirrels and cigarettes, you know, in the last meeting. And just to be kind of clear on that, that is more about just being obvious. If you have a 24-hour armed guard on site, you're not expecting a lower crime rate. One of the things I don't understand, if you can't have a cannabis store within 500 feet of a school, you can't have it within 500 feet of a church, then why is it appropriate to put one next to a house that could potentially have a child in it? I don't understand. I think honestly, we just haven't regulated this in such a way yet, because a lot of states have just, they've pushed it through, and we agree that people can smoke. I don't have a problem with that. But to put it on my street and it and say that you're not going to affect my traffic is is a ridiculous idea. It is obvious that you're going to affect our traffic. It is obvious that you can't spend a million dollars on a building and only get 12 people, or 20 people, or 30 people. You can't do it. That being said, I went through the city and the commercial property available in town, looking for maybe another suitable spot where maybe this this could happen a little easier on them. The only thing I really found was Friendly's Ice Cream Store up here by Kroger's on Dayton-Zenia and Fairfield Road. And I found a problem with that. It is 20 feet too close to a lot owned by a school, but not part of the school. And I'm wondering why we couldn't do a waiver for that 20 feet, which basically gets you halfway across Fairfield or across Dayton-Zenia Road. That seems to me to be a lot more appropriate place, and that building in itself is a lot more of an eyesore than a building back in a neighborhood that nobody sees. As far as crime rate is concerned, I don't have any crime in my neighborhood. I mean, I've fallen asleep all night long with a dirt bike sitting out front, garage door open, and nothing ever comes up missing. So if you're going to have a 24-hour armed guard service, you're not expecting less crime. That's number one. Number two, I realize that they they're not going to allow these people to loiter on their property and and smoke it on their property. That doesn't mean they're not going to drive in front of my house just down the street and do it, and their armed guard is not coming down there to run them out. So I want to know what my provisions are here of what what happens when that stuff starts happening. Nobody here in the council lives on Tonawanda. I do. These people do. No one here speaking in favor of this lives on Tonawanda. We're the ones with things to risk. And once you approve it, that's it. Time. Oh. So anyway, my daughter's got got out of guard at 6 o'clock. I got to roll. So thank you, guys.
You, well, I just wanted to, you were kind enough last month to give us a standing objection as to persons without standing testifying. I would just ask for that again, if that's all right. So I don't have to keep popping up for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg O'Connor, again here on behalf of Burris and Company. I'm with Macnamie and Macnamie, 2625 Commons Boulevard here in Beaver Creek. I understand the Planning Commission has received the CESO report that we provided supplemented after last month's hearing, and I hope the commission had a chance to read it in some depth. While we certainly respect Mr. Gallagher's opinion on that study, we have to, again, respectfully disagree with his conclusions about it vehemently. The entire crux of the matter here is how much traffic this place is going to generate, how many customers a day. That's, at the end of the day, what we're talking about, and what impact that's going to have. I brought Mr. Matko, who authored the report that was supplemented. I'll ask him to come up and make a few remarks about that and about the response to it by the by the applicant's study. But I just want to make one point, if I could, on this main issue of how many customers this is going to generate. I think it's pretty revealing that the applicant's numbers just keep changing. In the application, it was 300. Then, at the last meeting, it was, well, that's a little bit probably not right, so it's probably 175. Tonight, it's 75. I don't see how the commission can rely on any of these numbers. The 75 number that's in their report is also important to look at, because in Table 1.3, which they put on the slide on the board this evening, there's no support for that figure. There's no count data provided in an appendix to the report. And as Mr. Matko will describe, the seven sites that it's based on range, they're all over the board. They could have made that number anything they wanted, based on the number of sites that they picked to put in that slide or to leave off of it. That 75 figure is is extremely unreliable, in our opinion. The IT trip generation data, although certainly from states with recreational and medical marijuana, its important note comes up with a figure that is very similar to the 300 figure that was originally included with the conditional use application. That's not a coincidence. The 2% saturation point of the population that that 300 figure was based on leads to not only the 300 figure, the 300 figure that they used, but if you look at the broader market that this is going to draw from, not just Beaver Creek, that 2% saturation point starts leading to a figure that's dramatically over 300. So even the 300 figure may be low. And the IT trip generation manual that Mr. Matko used is an entirely reliable figure. I'm going to ask Mr. Matko to come up and provide some basic points of his report and some counterpoints from the Carpenter-Marty report. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. If Mr. O'Connor intends to present affirmative testimony from an expert, we are entitled to cross-examine that witness.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Robert Matko. I work for CESO. My CESO local office address is 3601 Rigby Road in Miami'sburg. I am here before you this evening to briefly go through the traffic study that was prepared, and then also discuss some of the so-called issues that were found by the applicant's traffic engineer. But I'd like to also first state that I am also a registered engineer in the state of Ohio. I also have 29 years of professional traffic operations experience. And again, I am also a professional traffic operations engineer. I will, again, briefly walk us through what we did in our initial report. And I think you heard from Mr. O'Connor, I think a big issue before you tonight is, what is this going to generate? What we did in our report is, we looked at what information correlates to what was what was stated by the applicant in terms of what this site would generate. I understand now that that number has changed a few times. We'll also get into some of the data that was collected. We'll also talk about, again, just some some key points and and just going through some of the comments that that were that were obtained. So when we were retained to conduct the traffic impact study, we hired a subconsultant to actually conduct the traffic counts, MyoVision. The counts were video-collected, just in case there were questions over, you know, what what is the traffic like out there? What are the queues? What are what are the issues? So we have those files available. And I can tell you that, you know, there are traffic backups that occur at Green that extend back during PM peak hours specifically through Tonawanda. So I would like to state that just right off the bat. So again, we retained the firm to actually conduct the traffic counts by video collection. We then, again, looked at, and we're not trying to hide what we did in IT. Obviously, you saw an excerpt that they used in their presentation. We also placed the data right in the back of our report. However, for us, that was the best data that correlated with what the applicant had indicated in terms of the number of anticipated customers. So you'll also hear that we we did assign a growth rate. I know the applicant's traffic engineer indicates that that growth rate should be 0.3%, or we talk about a 0% in our report. What we did for one year is, we took a 1% growth rate, only to the volumes on Indian Ripple Road. What that 1% does, it increases the through volume by 20 vehicles, 15 to 20. I think there's 1,523 vehicles going westbound in the AM peak and 22-plus in the PM peak. So 0.01, again, it's an increase of 15 to 20. Not unreasonable, certainly additional accounts for some small additional development that could occur in the in the next year. Again, not an unreasonable factor. So once we, again, had that growth rate, we took the trip generation, added it to the growth, the grown existing traffic by the 1%. Again, Tonawanda Trail was not increased. And again, that was the build volume, or the volume that was anticipated to occur during opening day. Once we received that number, we did input that number into highway capacity software, which is nationally-accepted software. We did use, again, a peak hour factor, and I know I'll get into some of the some of the comments and and our response to some of those. We did use the actual trip peak hour factor out there. But I would like to note that in the AM peak, it was 0.86, but in the PM peak, it was 0.96 factor, which is actually very conservative towards having a lower delay. So I would like to state that. We did look at, again, IT does not have a specific parking category for this type of use. This is a new use. I think that's the question before you, is how much is this site actually going to generate? There's a lot of unknowns before you. But using a category 880, which is a pharmacy, or, yeah, I believe it's a pharmacy use, in the parking generation data, for some reason, is acceptable to correlate to the parking, but not acceptable to generate the trips that we generated. I think you'll see in the applicant's traffic engineer's report, they did use that category 880, citing that it was the best use out there that would best fit this category. Very similar to what we did in coming up with our trip generation. Again, this was from the applicant's own numbers, where we tried to to verify what is this site going to generate. So with that, again, we did come out with answers indicating or results indicating that this site will cause an impact not only to right at the intersection of Indian Indian Ripple and Tonawanda. I think you'll see now that, I mean, there's a reason the left out, obviously, is restricted. I would put you in the in the position of, if you've tried to make a left turn, if you're going eastbound and northbound, how easy is it to cross three lanes of traffic on a stop sign-controlled intersection on Indian Ripple? Not very easy to do. Again, I would also indicate that video data and actual data shows that the queue length actually will back up beyond Tonawanda Trail during certain times of the AM and PM peak hour, specifically the PM peak hour. So going through, just in in some response, again, the trip generation, you're going to hear me talk about that a lot here. I know my time is running short here. You're going to hear me talk about that, because what is this site going to generate? I think that is a key issue. I think we did an appropriate job looking at what this site is going to generate based on the applicant's own numbers, which, again, continually see are now changing. We also looked at some of the data that's before you. What the applicant and their traffic engineer is stating is that this site is going to generate very similar trips to sites in Arizona and one site in Maryland. I would like to note, if you look at those volumes, they're they're all over the place. I understand there's a difference in size, but that's that's an issue. There's several holes in the data that was used. It's not similar to a site here in Beaver Creek. And and I'm stating that, but I'm not 100% sure if it's if it's the same or different, because that information was not included in their analysis. Obviously, they have a point to prove. They took liberty to state that our traffic impact study was flawed in that manner. But again, I would urge you to review that data that they supplied. Why seven sites? Why not five sites? Why not three sites? You know, why is one of the sites 155 patients, I understand is probably a larger size, but then another site is only 40 during a Thursday or Friday? So there is significant variations. And again, you'll hear me continuously say the trip generation is a deciding factor in what's before you tonight. How much is this going to generate? Moving along, I did talk about the the peak hour factors. Entering 0.92 is the peak hour factor, did not change the levels of service for the eastbound and northbound left, or the southbound and westbound right turn lane. I understand that that the applicant's traffic engineer indicates that should be a 0.92 factor. We tried to use the actual peak hour factor out there. But again, going back, looking at it, 0.86 for the AM, 0.96 for the PM. Again, I feel we were trying to represent the best case we did. Going back and even plugging in a 0.92 factor does not change that that level of I already talked about the 12 parking spaces, and again, how the applicant's traffic engineer used IT parking generation, but a category 880, but cited that our using a category of for the medical, or I'm sorry, for the marijuana dispensary was not correct. Again, we fall back on what the applicant's information was. Moving along, again, I already spoke about trip generation, and I think the applicant's traffic engineer indicates it's severely overestimated. I would really hope that you consider that statement and understand that we feel, again, 29 years' experience in traffic engineering, that the traffic that we are projecting is not severely overestimated. I'd like to also indicate that nothing in the applicant's traffic engineer's report talks about any of the impact on the residential neighborhood to the neighborhood. talks about any of the impact on the residential neighborhood to the north. That's also a large concern. I understand they're recommending or stating that a right-out would solve a lot of that problem. But I can tell you, a right-out only works as if it's monitored by, you know, either the police or whatnot. People with a, and I don't disagree, Tonawanda Trail does not have a lot of traffic on it, and there's a reason there's not a lot of traffic on it. I also commend the city for making that a lower-volume road and not a cut-through street. But there are significant concerns over the residential portion of this project. You can't make a left out of Tonawanda Trail onto Indian Ripple Road. You have to actually go out of the site, go through the subdivision, and circle back around the Indian Ripple Road. Now, again, assuming that the applicant decides to prohibit or restrict that outbound left, vehicles that, more than 70% of the traffic is going to head towards the interstate. That's, we're only just thousands of feet from the interstate. So again, if that outbound movement is restricted, you're going to force vehicles down, again, to Tonawanda Trail and Indian Ripple Road, make a right. They're either going to make a U-turn at the next signal, causing an unsafe situation. You know, it may potentially be legal, but on a three-lane roadway each direction, making a U-turn is not a safe situation. So I don't agree that restricting the left in this case will solve that issue to restrict vehicles from traveling through the residential neighborhood. We also stated that in the traffic report, obviously, there is going to be more additional traffic, significantly, we feel, through the residential subdivision. It is a residential subdivision. There are pedestrians through that area. There are children in that area. There will be an impact on pedestrians in that area. I know the applicant's traffic consultant is indicating that that will not be the case, but again, I would disagree with that. In summary, again, before you tonight, I firmly believe the trip generation is what is going to really, you know, it's something you have to look at and decide what you feel this site is going to generate. I feel before you that our study has shown that this is not the best use for this area, traffic-wise. It's a residential area. It's a street that's restricted to a right-in, right-out, left-in. And again, there's reasons for those restrictions that are in place. I'd like to further state that even going through, I understand that there was concern over our flawed analysis. I would like to indicate that the analysis did look at upstream signal data, and again, the levels of service will create an issue. And I think you can see in the applicant's traffic engineer's report, they look at a percent increase in delay. That's fine, but it's not stating what the issues are today in adding traffic to those issues. And I believe that that will only compound what is happening. With that, I would just conclude that, again, you have a decision before you. Hopefully, I've answered or addressed a lot of those questions, and I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. Mr. Matt Code. And I'll try to keep my voice up. Where do you live, sir?
I actually live and reside in Lansing, Michigan.
You mentioned counts that you had done that were videotaped. That was of the present-day situation at Indian Ripple, correct?
That's correct.
That was not of a medical marijuana dispensary, correct?
That's correct.
Have you ever been to a Harvest location?
I have not.
Have you ever spoken with a Harvest representative?
I have not.
Have you ever requested trip data from Harvest itself?
I have not.
Have you ever been to a medical marijuana dispensary of any kind?
I have, yes.
Where?
I've visited marijuana dispensaries around, actually, there was one in Colorado that I attended, or actually passed by, just to see what that type of facility looked like.
And of course, Colorado is a recreational state, and they don't simply have medical marijuana. It is both, correct?
That's correct.
And the IT data, just so the record is clear, that you looked at was recreational and medical dispensaries, correct? Both.
That's correct. We're not hiding that fact.
And in fact, that data is a new entry, relatively new entry, in the IT, correct?
That's correct.
Only been available for about five years?
That's correct.
And Mr. Spack told you that he believed that a medical-only dispensary would have less traffic?
I believe the key word was "he believed," or, I don't have the exact quote, but I don't believe he did any research into it.
It was his professional opinion. Can you agree with that?
I wouldn't say it's opinion. I believe he indicated a key word was either possibly or potentially.
Okay.
Right up in the keyword.
Now, did you look at IT data for other permitted uses within the B2 district for this site?
No, I did not.
Sit-down restaurant?
No.
Convenience store?
I did not.
Now, your parking conclusions, if I understand it correctly, are based on your examination of the IT data for recreational marijuana dispensaries, correct?
That's correct.
And so if that data, the traffic counts for recreational marijuana dispensaries, are inaccurate, your parking conclusions are likewise inaccurate, correct?
No, I would disagree with that. Again...
Well, you drew, just so I understand, you drew a direct correlation between trips to the site and parking necessary. Isn't that correct?
But what you're missing, though...
No, isn't that correct?
No, what you're missing, if I can speak, is, again, we compared the IT trip generation with your own projected numbers. So we feel those numbers are correct.
Your parking conclusions are based upon the IT generated data for recreational marijuana dispensaries, correct?
Medical and recreational.
Okay. Are there no parking signs on Tonawanda Trail today?
There are.
When were used at the site?
Probably about, I don't know, it's been a little while since I've been there.
And in fact, they were only installed five weeks ago, correct?
That may be the case, yes.
And those signs exist in front of the dispensary site today, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I'm sure we have more folks that would wish to speak.
Yes.
You may want to pull the microphone down just a little bit so we can hear you. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello again. My name is Susan Rollins, and I live at 405 Tanglewood Drive. The issue here is not Harvest of Ohio LLC or their facilities. The issue is not medical marijuana. The issue is the location on Tonawanda. I received an invitation on Labor Day from Harvest of Ohio LLC. They held a meeting last night to discuss the benefits of marijuana and address the traffic situation. I did not attend because I already know about the benefits of medical marijuana for people who have a legitimate medical need. Also, I did not need to see a paper report about how traffic would be, not be disrupted because I live here, not in Arizona. I have firsthand knowledge. I live this area all the time. The statement was made, a compliment, that, you know, Beaver Creek has kept that from being a cut-through street by having that, the way they put the barrier, and I'm sure that helped. But I'm guilty. You know, when I go see my father-in-law, I take that, you know, Tonawanda. But when I want to go to County Line to go someplace else, I go past my father-in-law's home. I use Tonawanda as a cut-through. People use it as a cut-through. They use it for rentals and rentals. They use it for all those businesses over there. And it is a mess. The traffic is a mess. I don't care what either report says for traffic. You have to live it. Paper is okay. Videos are okay. LLC, IT, whatever, you know, that's okay. But you try going west on Indian Ripple on the weekend, or daily, when cars are heading home from work shifts and right pad is just off, they're pouring onto Indian Ripple. The green itself generates a tremendous amount of traffic. And now, woo-hoo, the Kane Chicken Restaurant is going up in front of where the old Kmart is. Do you know how many people are crazy and waiting for that chicken restaurant? Do you know how much more traffic is going to be there for chicken? And the large nursing home, it generates a lot of traffic. On the weekends, I go over, on the weekends sometimes, to my father-in-law's, and the traffic overflow is on that street. And that's Saturday, and that's Sunday, sometimes during the week, you know, depending, but that's a lot of traffic. This situation affects Tonawanda. It does not affect County Line. The next street over closer where I am is Silvania. It has no effect on that, this dispensary. So that's not an issue.
You're out of time.
Now, okay. Do I have three minutes?
And you would be...
Just...
Okay, thank you.
If someone has to turn left to get back on 675, they either have to quickly get all the way over to the left and do a turn inside the green shopping center. That is not easy, trust me. You know that. And even when you go in, it's like a mess right there. And where do you turn around? You have to go within. You have to go inside the area. You can't, there's no U-turn. There's no U-turn at the light. That is a problem. Or you have to turn right at Burger King. You go into where the old Kmart is, and then you have to turn around. But then, now you're going to deal with chicken people. So that's going to be an issue. And the other option, of course, if you don't do the right turn only, which I'm sure that the people will be so respectful and always turn right out there, but if they turn left, they're going to go down Tonawanda, they're going to hit County Line, they're going to turn left, and they're going to have to turn left on Indian Ripple to go back out. The 675 is an easy, easy access. Easy access to Centerville, Kettering, Xeno, Bellbrook, Miamisburg, West Carrollton, Fairborn, all kinds of places. People who are looking to go to their, get their medical marijuana, are going to say, hey, this is cool. I can get that, and I can go shopping, and I can get chicken, you know? So, hey, this is a good thing. And, okay, and then, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything important. And I would have to say, I'm 41 years a teacher, in my eighth year of substituting, so that's a long time. And so I'm up with things. And I see the effects of marijuana, and I'm not going to go that route because you asked us not to. But I'm concerned, I voted for medical marijuana. I believe in that for people who are ill. I will not vote for recreational. I've seen students all the time in kindergarten and preschool who are affected with learning disabilities from the womb, or they're living in homes that are unsuitable. They live in terrible situations. And unfortunately, I've attended funerals of three of my kindergarten students from drugs, and that is uncalled for. And then my last thing. They had discussed about how there weren't, the traffic was not going to be that bad because they've got 90 days in Ohio. Plus, we have this big, you know, we have a lot more reasons for them to have the medical marijuana over and above what Arizona allows. So, but they're saying, hey, but they get to keep it for 90 days. My last thought for you is, I have never known a cookie to last 90 days. Thank you.
Well, between smoking squirrels and chicken people, we're at least trying to have a little fun this evening.
My name is Cynthia Ramsey, and I live at 4124 Tonawanda. So respectfully but regretfully, I don't have a lot of confidence in the city of Beaver Creek to protect our neighborhood. We've seen you fail with protecting us from the noise and the traffic from the green. Now we have a car wash, and now we're going to have even more traffic come through our neighborhood. So I don't really care what the numbers of the traffic say. I'm telling you, there's too much traffic cutting through Tonawanda from 675. There's too much traffic cutting through from 675 through Tonawanda. I see it all the time. It's semis, it's motorcycles, it's cars that are not from that neighborhood, constantly speeding down our street. It is a cut-through. At one time, wasn't that road blocked at Thames? Maybe somebody should consider blocking that off again. You could put a gate up so that squads or fire trucks could get through, but it could be blocked from making it a cut-through because it is ridiculous. And it's not only the numbers of traffic, it's the type of traffic, like I say, that come through. They fly down that street, trying to beat those lights at the green, and there's usually a line of traffic as they go down, trying to do that, and then flying through the lights at Tonawanda and County Line. That's all I have to say. I think you'll be making a big mistake.
Hi there. Dave Reyer, 1372 Windsor Drive, Beaver Creek. Thank you for the time to speak. I know the commission's cities experts and staff will review all the information available and use their expertise and familiarity with our community to make the right decision. But I wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight and share some personal observations on Harvest rebuttal document, based on my own personal and professional experience that includes a PhD in ops research and applied statistics, and decades of analyzing our nation's global transportation network, including a myriad detail of interactions between people, vehicles, and a variety of services we offer all over the world. In short, continually foot-stomping Harvest's assumption of 150 customers per day does little to mitigate Harvest's analytical deficiencies to support inserting a new industry at this location and fails to encapsulate real effects to the local community. A brief list of visible issues revealed in a review of the rebuttal includes insufficient explanation or perhaps use of arrival times, rates, and distributions; insufficient explanation of service times, rates, and distributions; no clear explanation of applicable queuing theory in association with assumptions; no visible supporting simulations, or available output analysis; I did not observe adjustments on out-of-state customer numbers that are limited due to dozens and dozens of existing and successful dispensaries in their current locations; failure to address the cumulative impact of daily operations on the surrounding communities and its normal activities; confusing transitional use of customers, exits, entries, vehicles, and their equivalencies, and continuing changing quantities; selective use of summary, out-of-state, and non-regional data; no definition or explanation of what would be considered adverse or detrimental effects or impacts to our surrounding community. In summary, the Harvest rebuttal as presented makes it very difficult to make any supporting endorsement for the placement of this facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Annette Poth, 2179 Wedgwood Drive, Beaver Creek. Am I allowed to give handouts?
I'm sorry?
Am I allowed to give handouts? Okay.
Sure.
So my first comments are going to shed some light on Harvest of Ohio's data. Where are they pulling this data from? To me, it looks as unbelievable, inaccurate, flawed, and definitely unknown. Last month, they presented serving about 4,200 customers a year. I do the math, 75 customers a day times 365 is now 27,375 customers. I have just distributed to you a spreadsheet where we're taking a look from Beaver Creek, the city, the township, down to Bellbrook, Spring Valley, Kettering, Centerville, Washington Township, pulling in Miamisburg, West Carrollton, Oakwood, all of the surrounding cities that are going to be coming to this proposed dispensary. And that total population is 364,281. If you reference an article that is attached to the spreadsheet that I gave you, the Ohio Board of Pharmacy is anticipating a 3% use of the population. So we take this total population that will be served by the Tonawanda dispensary, and 3% of that is 10,928 customers a year. Now, I have no idea what this formula is that Harvest of Ohio is in their customers per month, per week, per hour, per peak time. I hope that you do. I hope that you have that formula when you make that decision, because right now... Because right now, without it being shared, you're making a decision in the blind. My next comments are going to pertain to, are we comparing apples to apples? Their estimates of traffic is in relation to stores that they have in Arizona. Arizona has allowed for 16 medical conditions. Ohio has allowed for 21 medical conditions. You cannot compare an Ohio dispensary to an Arizona dispensary and make an estimate of what the population is going to be that will be served, that number of customers, when Ohio serves, can serve more ill people. There are several conditions that Arizona does not cover that I want to bring to your attention. Alzheimer's disease, cancer. Arizona states that it's for hospice patients only. The Marijuana Board states ours condition is cancer. Ohio allows for fibromyalgia, inflammatory bowel disease, Parkinson's disease, traumatic brain injury, just to name a few.
Excuse me, your, your three minutes is up. Okay, and you would be, please? Thank you.
So this nullifies that comparison. There's no validity in taking a look at who Ohio can serve and projecting the traffic versus what they're doing in Arizona. On aside, we also, in their projections of peak time, you know, Ohio weather is very different than Arizona weather. I, I just, it doesn't make sense to me. And I hope that you will consider that, take a look at it. Um, don't make a decision without having all of the information. Now, I want to quickly get on to a few, few other issues that look just really sketchy to me. Them saying that the parking is adequate, I don't get that. If there are 12 parking places, how many employees do they have? Last night, they said five to six. And there's going to be delivery trucks coming. So that's leaving five to six parking spots open for customers. Well, if they're seeing 23, in one document, they estimate 23 customers during a peak hour. What's the math? 23 minus six, how many are parking in the street? Oh, but wait, you can't park in the street because there's no parking signs. So where, is their security guard going to have people just circle the neighborhood until there's a parking spot open? Another flaw that I see in the comparisons is that the Beaver Creek proposed store is about 500-plus square feet bigger than the Arizona stores that they're pulling numbers from. So this is not apples to apples. Ken said that there's no evidence of crime. However, I remind you of that study from Ohio State that I emailed you in the last few days that shows that there is crime surrounding dispensaries. And Dr. Trout proclaimed that there is actually a decrease in traffic fatalities. And I can point to a study that is titled, "The Legislation of Marijuana in Colorado: Impact Study" dated October 2017. And it, this is a phenomenal study. And I think that I emailed that to you as well. It breaks down all of their numbers from pre-medical marijuana commercialization to then recreational commercialization. And it shows that there are double the marijuana-related driving fatalities. So I will hope, I hope that you will keep these ideas, these concerns, as you consider what to do with this license.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I would like to object to this exhibit based on standing and hearsay and any exhibits privately emailed to commission members that haven't been shared with the applicant.
Could you, could you repeat that?
Sure. We would object to this exhibit based on stand, lack of standing and hearsay. And then likewise, there was mention made of exhibits emailed privately to the members of the planning commission that haven't been shared with the applicant at this hearing on its application. So I would object to their being considered at all.
Thank you, so noted.
Corey O'Connor, 4184 Tonawanda Trail. Disclaimer, I'm not related to Greg. So first, I'd like to thank everybody here. I, I understand that you will make the best decision for our community. Because that's what we're here for. And I think the main issue that's been brought up is traffic. And is it going to be detrimental? Well, traffic is going to be detrimental to our community. I've, I've heard the applicant say that there's no increase in traffic, but, oh, then it's only 75. Well, that 75 are going to be unique visitors. Because if you look at the state law and the 90-day supply, those, those 75 people are unique. And as we all know, when you look at marketing and business, unique visitors are important, and that is what drives up property value. So kind of going in line and you look at different research along the subject of increased property value and crime rates, I think, I think it's, those two pieces are important. And I understand the hearsay part because, because you can do a Google search and you can find many research articles stating property values are going to increase from medical, from marijuana period, whether it's medical or recreational. Those, those unique visitors are my main concern. You know, I, I know the other uses have been brought up. I would be opposing this today if it was a pharmacy because we would still be getting unique visitors in our neighborhood. And I think that's the problem. So it's 99% residential. Someone can fact-check me on that. But north, north of, of Indian Ripple there, it's, it's about 99% residential. So why, you know, why those have been there just historically, that's something to think about. That's all I have to say. But I do think it would be detrimental to the community. And that's what we have to think about first.
Barbara Fjork Olsen, 4039 Maridale Drive. I listened to what people had to say. And I think one, when they said that it's a sleepy street and was kind of surprised by that, I said, well, that's what we like. That's what the residents want. So any increased traffic is detrimental. And who should decide whether or not this has a severe impact? But the residents. What other skill are you going to use to make this decision? Someone in Manhattan will go, that's nothing. But someone who lives here is going to say, this is detrimental. This is a serious impact. So that needs to be considered. And when they made comparisons to the traffic on Indian Ripple, once again, that's not, well, I hate how Indian Ripple is crazy. So, but that's not the point right now. That traffic is bad already. It will get worse. But Tiawanda, we don't need it in our neighborhood. I also wonder, I have to question these numbers. As everyone's been bringing up of how many people will actually be there. I sit scratching my head going, how are you going to make money if there's not many people coming? So I don't know that. I also want to know, does Beaver Creek have some recourse if we turn out that, oh my gosh, it's 500 people who are coming in here a day? I mean, what, what do we have to do? What guarantee do I have as a resident other than I need to sell my house and move on somewhere if this turns out to be a problem? So that, or, those are my concerns. I would leave you with the comment that was made that there were no exits during the AM rush hour. And I had to think, oh, they're building the Hotel California. You can check out anytime you want, but you can never leave.
Hello. I'm Pat Barton, 2109 Wedgewood Drive. And I have two brief points. There's a lot of discussion about people buying marijuana and 90-day supplies, therefore they won't frequent the dispensary as often. I don't believe that people are going to buy a 90-day supply and lay out that cash right up front. I did take advantage of the session last night. And there's going to be consulting and helping patients find the right product for them. So they're going to have quite a few trips, for sure. And also, Dr. Trout made reference that he holds patient orientation sessions. And sometimes as many as 40 and 50 people come to those. I don't know where they're going to park. And I think we need to get a grip on the numbers because they keep changing. And as a resident, I can't follow it. Doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. I'm Mark Olson, 4039 Maridale Drive. And I just have a short comment. Harvest has said a lot, you know, a bar could go in there or some other retail. If a bar tried to go in there, I think we'd have just as many people here protesting that or any other type of retail that would bring in the same amount. So I don't think that that's germane to the argument as to what else could go in there other than medical marijuana. Because we all would be protesting it, it's the traffic. Thank you.
Suzette Cochran, 4000 Tonawanda Trail. Tonawanda Trail and County Line Road. I am the house on the corner. I've lived there 10 years. We have school-aged children. We chose this neighborhood because we rented a house for about a year, went straight over. We chose this neighborhood on purpose. It's a sleepy little neighborhood. There's a lot of retired people. There's still some young kids. There's buses that come through. I don't have anything prepared to say because I was getting my kids supper before I came here tonight. Which was fast food because I had to come here tonight. I want to defend our right to have our sleepy little neighborhood. And if you wanted some real traffic studies, come sit right on my corner any night when Reynolds &amp; Reynolds gets out. Or any night when people are turning around at the end. Or any night when you're sitting there watching the traffic build up, going around the block, getting gas at the BP, and coming back all the way around. It's a mess the way it is. This, if you have five cars come through there a day, it's adding to the problem. My kids get off the school bus, they're school-aged. There's kids that walk through there, walk their dogs through there, people who lose their dogs all the time. And I don't want a business on my streets. This isn't why I moved here. I already had someone knock on my door the other night and ask to see my house because he said, I'm selling mine. He goes, I've lived here 30 years and I'm out. Is that what's going to happen to our neighborhood? That is what's going to happen to our neighborhood. So whether you live in Michigan or you do studies, come sit with me. I can tell you exactly what the traffic patterns are. I know them. I sit there every night.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kirk Foster. I live on 4318 Tonawanda Trail. I've lived there probably about 16 years. My wife has lived on Tonawanda Trail probably 16 years longer than I have. So she's lived on there probably 30 years now, on and off. She used to work at Crestview and is now, of course, the green. One thing I don't seem to think that anybody's looked at is how is that going to affect, you know, the green or the old Crestview? I'm, I'm sure as much as competitive as that it is to get people to come into nursing homes and stay there. And the green has just spent millions of dollars upgrading that facility. How is that going to impact their facility? As far as traffic studies, you know, I wish I still had my wife's car that got hit when she was backing out of the street for a traffic study. I almost get hit probably two or three times a month trying to get out of my driveway for a traffic study. We have traffic, people cut, cut in and out of Tonawanda Trail. I hate to say this, but the traffic light that was put on the end of Tonawanda Trail has actually increased our traffic. I mean, I'm on my lawn, I do work on my lawn. I work on my cars. That's increased the traffic on Tonawanda Trail. When they leave the dispensary, they're going to have to go out down Tonawanda Trail, past her house. They're going to have to. I'm sorry. I walk those streets, you know, I'm, I'm kind of a chubby guy. I try to take in a walk four or five times a week to keep my weight down. And I have a little dog that seems to like to take me for a walk around the block, too. And we do that to, to keep our weight down. There are no sidewalks on Tonawanda Trail. A lot of the neighbors in the community, not, not only that live on Tonawanda Trail, but live in the, in the other outlying communities walk that area for exercise. I just, and if this was supposed to be so transparent as a lot of people say, I, I never, I live on Tonawanda Trail, nobody's knocked on my door. Nobody's sent any invitations to me to speak to me or my wife. There's been, it's been silent, you know? Other than what we receive from the city of Beaver Creek. So if, and I've traveled all over the United States and I don't see how you could ever compare the traffic in Ohio, especially in January or December, with Arizona. I mean, a cold day in Arizona is probably 40 degrees. You know? We have two or three inches of ice often in the wintertime. And as far as the medical marijuana, that's immaterial to me. We're not discussing that. I think about an hour of our discussion tonight was wasted on that. That could have been done at the State House, you know?
Think you've got your three minutes.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Rusty Cochran. It's my wife. I live in the same house as she does on the corner. So I'll give you some firsthand account of traffic. The famous chicken place that's going in on, right across the street from the green. Two nights ago, they blocked the turn lane that goes into the Kmart parking lot just past BP. So everybody was trying to jam into two other, one less traffic lane to go straight down into Kettering. And I watched 20 cars go down my street within the 10-minute period. And that was at like 3:30 in the afternoon. So this is going to do the same thing to that. I just wanted the guys to point that out. That is a firsthand traffic knowledge. I was sitting on my porch watching that, so, thanks.
Thank you. We can't be out of people. Oh, I knew somebody had come up.
I'm always late. I'm George Rollins. And I live at 4348 Tonawanda Trail, which is three doors down from what they're talking about. And I can say anything that they haven't already said. And I agree with everything they've said. But I do want to stress one thing. I don't understand what they're talking about getting in off of Indian Ripple Road onto Tonawanda. When you come in, when you come in, you've got Interstate 675, North and South. You've got Beaver Creek coming in from East to West. And you've got them coming in on Dorothy Lane going west. All of them can turn on Tonawanda, but they can't get out. The only way they can get out is to go straight down Tonawanda Trail because they can't go back and make a left turn. The only way you can get back on a left is, is to go right. Now, another thing, I see, I, I, I see these people walking. So I know what they're talking about. I see them walking with their dogs. I see them walking with their kids. We do not have any sidewalks. And this is definitely going to increase traffic. I don't know what they say. I can sit there and watch the traffic out of my family room door. And it's a constant flow of traffic certain times a day. A lot of traffic goes down Tonawanda Trail already. And with this increase that we, that this will create, I don't, they, they say, but it will increase traffic. And I just think this is a bad situation. And I think it should be considered. And I, I certainly appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hi, Sidney Gearing, 1275 Oakleaf Drive. I actually just have two questions because I'm uncertain. So if either you can clarify, someone here, the legal advisor, or even here with Harvest. There was a lot of distinction in the presentations made by Harvest of trying to delineate between the medical cannabis users and the volumes that those generate as opposed to recreational. comparisons. So what I'm not sure about is if the direction that current, the state is being pushed for legislation that would change being a medical marijuana state only and that were to change, does the city have the ability to guarantee that these predictions and data that's all being presented is only going to remain at medical users' volume only, meaning there would not be, it could not be converted to a retail dispensaries that then could expand to the recreational users that would hit the high-volume traffic that that interstate and location is? So, and then the question is, I guess, you made the point, Harvest, that I think you only deal with medical marijuana. Is that a guarantee that that would always be your business? Or is there, is that a promise to this community that that is your business model? Or could that potentially change and then obviously have increased volume? So I'm not sure, I'm not sure, but how do you guarantee that those would not be a volume increase for the traffic and for the conditions and the clientele? Is that clear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Those are some good questions and we've already written them down. So when it comes time for us to discuss, we will bring that up. Thank you for bringing it up. Good questions. I saw someone else jump up and sit back down again. There he is.
My name is Mike Rourke. I live at 2946 Rockledge Trail. I don't experience, you know, I can't dispute what they say on Tonawanda, I'm not on it. But it's not the only way out of the neighborhood. And if I'm going to get on 675, I'm not going to Tonawanda and go that way. I'll go to where I go down Vineland and hit Wood Grove and come back out. And that's the way the most sensible people would probably go because you've got no traffic lights because the traffic lights you face, you turn right. So I, you know, I realize there's probably going to be a lot of traffic. But, you know, that building's going to become something at some point. You know, I appreciate all your data, all this data. You know, I hope, you know, I hope they get to have their medical thing. You know, what's the research? Nobody's had any research yet on how many accidents have been in that neighborhood. I haven't heard anything about that. The guy addressed the thing on the crime, that they expect crime because they got an armed guard. I think they're preparing for crime. I don't think they expect it. But that's better than having a store that somebody goes in and shoots everybody up that's got nobody there. So, you know, there's pros and cons each way. Maybe you got restricted hours, restricted hours that allow the bulk of your traffic because restricted hours allow the bulk of their traffic to not be prime time. Because the people that need medical marijuana, they're going to come get it when it's open. So if you got, maybe you got, maybe, you know, you know, maybe you're at 5:30 AM to 7:30 or something, you know, then you've got some PM, you know, and you've got some mid-day times that are, that are not peak times. But that's just my thought on it. And I'm not disputing any, any of the other people. I've lived there fifteen years. I've never had any problem getting through the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I thought I was the lone wolf today. My name is Nieskoff. I live at 4303 Wall Bridge Trail. So unfortunately, I don't live on Tonawanda. However, I've been in the neighborhood over twenty years. And like the other gentleman just said, there is other ways out of the neighborhood. So even when I come home from work or I'm going to the Green, I cut through the neighborhood as well. I don't always go down Tonawanda, but I go through, I'm not sure of the street name, but then I go to Ellen and Treadwell and go on out to the light. So there is other options besides Tonawanda Trail. And then just on a personal note as well, I mean, I think that it's going to be great for the community. I said, I've lived here all my life. I've raised my kids here. So I just think it's going to be a good, good thing for the community and up maybe, maybe do some things and see some more things that'll come to the community. But for traffic-wise, like I said, I live there and I haven't had any issues. And we talk about crime as well. So I think you're going to have crime anywhere. And Beaver Creek is not, you know, the saint city that there's no crime anywhere. You can see that anywhere, no matter where you live. And unfortunately, we've had it on our street as well. But I don't really see a huge issue when it comes to traffic since there's other ways out of our plat. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't think we'd be running out of people quite yet.
Hi, I'm Susan Maricella and I live at 270 Rebel Court. And I don't want this business in Beaver Creek. I've lived here sixteen years. I'm an Air Force wife. I'm a mama bear. I have two daughters. My daughters like hang out at the Green every weekend. They're at college right now, but they hang out at the Green. And so if they're not able to like take the marijuana in the parking lot, where do they go? Well, they can't turn left, so now they're going right into the Green and maybe taking the pot there. I don't know. I'm just saying that I don't really, like, it's really close to the Green where you have Beaver Creek, Carroll and other students hanging out on the weekends, and that just concerns me. I also, I went to college in Colorado and I would love to go back there and live there, but I will never live there because I do not like the fact that they first started with the marijuana, medical marijuana, and now it's legal. My twenty-one-year-old can have pot if she wanted to there. That concerns me. I am, and it's still illegal under the federal law. I know we're not supposed to talk about pot, but it's still illegal. I mean, you know, and that, why are we, you know, it's, it concerns me that these people in the state of Ohio are giving the federal government the middle finger and now Beaver Creek wants to do that, too. I mean, yes, saying, you know, they're saying that, yes, it's illegal, but we're going to do it anyway. So, and it was brought to my attention that just because there's different ways out, you're now just spreading the traffic to other streets and stuff like that. But I just, I have chose Beaver Creek to live here. I could have gone to Kettering. I could have gone all these other places. I chose to live in Beaver Creek because it's a good, old-fashioned community where I liked the way it feels. And I feel like I'm part of a Facebook page and I put it out there and people are like, you know what? I don't know if I live in Beaver Creek because of this. So I know, fine, we don't have to talk about pot, but it's out there and it's concerning to me because, you know, they can pay for their experts, they can have someone to talk about the housing and that, that's, you know, but if I had to relocate, I don't think I'd move to the street if that, if that's, business is there. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Claude Hatfield. I live at 1606 Thunderbird Lane, Unit 57, West Carrollton, Ohio. I lived and worked in Beaver Creek for thirty years. My daughter and her family still lives here. When I was approached about selling the property at 4370 Tonawanda Trail, I did a lot of research on cannabis. I did a lot of research on Harvest. I think with all the research that I have done and all the things I've read and heard, I think Harvest would be a great fit for the community. There are people that needs medical marijuana. I lost my own sister through ovarian cancer. And the medical marijuana helped her tremendously with the nauseous, the vomiting, and she did regain some appetite. So again, it wasn't something I took lightly when I was approached about selling the property. There's been a lot of different businesses in there in the last fifty years. I've been there over thirty years. I've seen the traffic. I was there before Burris &amp; Company, the Green, and a whole lot of places there. We operated nine plumbing trucks out of that business daily. We had customers come in. We had delivery trucks. There was never no issue of any traffic concern, problems on Tonawanda Trail while I was there my thirty-two years. Will there be some more traffic? Well, sure there will be, but that's with anything. And I think the biggest thing about it is everybody's talking about the traffic and everything, but there's also a good side benefit, again, for people that need the medical marijuana. So again, denying the use, I have some rights, too, as far as the property owner. I'm retired. Denying the use of this could, again, affect my family, my retirement. So I think it's a good fit and I ask you to take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Shirk. I live at 3020 Thames Lane, Catty Quarter to where this is going to be, supposedly be. I'm not against the facility itself, just not in a residential neighborhood. I have a brother that has cancer and is, has to get the medical marijuana, but he goes, it's not in a neighborhood where he has to go get it, in Michigan. They just don't need it in a neighborhood. It could be, there's plenty of other open, more spaces in shopping centers. There's up at where the old Kmart is. There's a spot up there where the Jo-ian Fabrics or whatever the fabric store was. There's a lot more traffic that they could go in there, more space to park. It's a bigger facility. I just don't believe it belongs into a residential neighborhood. Along with the traffic, I sit and I can watch the traffic going up and down every day, just like George Rollins does. And they're not just driving the speed limit, they're flying down. Not all of them, but most of them do. They need to have a speed bump, something on our street. Thank you.
Thank you. Thought we had run out, but we've got, everybody who wants to speak gets their, gets their chance.
Rita Reyer, 1372 Windsor Drive. And I wasn't going to speak, but they're all talking about traffic flow. And I was just wondering if you've got my email about some of the concerns I had with the way the county, the planning commission is, wants to develop the city. But we didn't talk about fatal car crashes. And I just, in my article, had made a note, currently, one in nine drivers involved in fatal crashes would test positive for marijuana. That study is co-authored by Dr. Goi Hoya Lee, Director of Center for Injury Entomology and Prevention at Columbia. If this trend continues in four to five, six, five or six years, non-alcoholic drugs are, will overtake alcohol to become the most common substance-involved death related to impaired driving. And so I know he compared it to alcohol. According to this article, the researchers looked at crash statistics from six states that routinely performed toxicology tests on drivers involved in fatal car wrecks. That's California, Hawaii, Illinois, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, West Virginia. And the data include more than twenty-four, or twenty-three thousand five hundred drivers who died within one hour of a crash between 1999 and 2010. Now, that's, that's a long time ago. Can you imagine what it is at 2018? Then I wanted to make a comment about all the, the number of customers coming into the facility. I know they were talking, they were averaging it from Arizona sites. And as you look up Arizona dispensaries, you've got, just in the Phoenix area, sixty dispensaries. So even though their number is low, they divided it over lots and lots of dispensaries. So we have, what, I think six or something like that? So just take that into consideration on that number. And I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Is the well running dry? I'll say, last chance. If anyone wishes to speak, speak now or don't. Now, I'll close the public hearing. Did we have any written input?
Yes, we did. The commissioners received four emails from Annette Poth of 2179 Wedgewood Drive, who is not in favor of the conditional use case. Another email was submitted to the commissioners from David and Rita Reyer, who are opposed to the conditional use case. And then the final one was submitted to the commissioner. It was from concerned citizens. It's Pat Barton and Annette Poth in opposition of the conditional use case.
Thank you. Folks, we've been going for almost two and a half hours, so I'm going to propose we take about a five or ten-minute break before we open the discussion among the commissioners and then make our decision. Before we discuss amongst ourselves here, we need to untable, since we tabled this from last month. It's on. Can you hear me now? Okay, to repeat, before we get the show back on the road here, we do need to untable this because it was tabled after last month. So I need a motion to untable?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
And I have a second and we will do that by general consensus. Thank you. Okay, we are now untabled. And our city legal advice, Ms. Blankenship would like to explain to you all exactly what's going on here. This is quite different from a typical zoning hearing. And it's an area that the planning commission gets into on a fairly rare basis. So this will give you a better idea of exactly what's going on tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Self. So as you state, while this commission normally sits in a different capacity, this commission is often making policy. When you're making policy and citizens present you with their opinions, you need to consider the citizen opinion and build it into the city's policy. What you're doing tonight, as has been pointed out to you, is you are in an administrative or quasi-judicial capacity. Quasi-judicial is exactly what it sounds like. You're sitting here as a judge and you are judging this application. And as a judge, you can only consider evidence in front of you. While this is a very difficult concept for any commission in any city to address, evidence does not necessarily always include citizen comment. Citizens with standing, as has been mentioned by, several times by applicant's counsel tonight, citizens with standing can provide you with evidence. Evidence would be what you can consider in this application. Evidence is testimony taken by, that was given to you by the applicant and their experts. The neighbor brought an expert, provided testimony. That would also be evidence in front of you. Everything that's in the record in front of you is considered evidence of your record. Citizen comment needs to be someone with standing in order for it to be considered evidence. Standing would be someone who perhaps lives right next door to the property or very, very close and can testify to a unique harm unto themselves that is different than the harm that perhaps could be suffered in their view by the citizens as a whole. Generally, issues with traffic is not considered that unique harm. There are certain times when it can be, but generally, concerns in a neighborhood about traffic is not considered unique harm enough to constitute sufficient standing.
Thank you. And I agree. I've been on this a long time and this is different, different and it's a difficult task for us to grasp when we're not lawyers, like one of our members is. Okay, with that said, I'm going to start with our, with our distaff member.
Well, I'll be honest, I have a long list of questions. So I guess it's better to start with me. So these are questions for the applicant. I'm not sure who wants to respond, but as they come about, I guess whoever has the appropriate representation. The first is in reference to the traffic study that was provided. One of the questions that I have is when we're looking at the numbers that were provided on Table Three, which were the seven different locations and the average number of patients, and then we look at the average that you're providing of the seventy-five patients, that is not taking into account Sunday, Monday, Friday and Saturday, noting that this was stated to be the industry standard, perhaps. Can you explain why the other days were not taken into consideration, please?
I'm going to tag-team that with Mr., I'm going to tag-team that with Mr. Gallagher. I think my layman's understanding would be that those are the peak days and in the industry, the accepted standard, but I'll let Mr. Gallagher speak to that directly.
Actually, that'd be probably incorrect. And I, I think the- And I, I think Mr. Burris's expert would testify as well, that the industry standard using those weekdays, Mondays fluctuate up and down because of vacations, holidays, Fridays fluctuate up and down because of vacations, things like that, people taking three-day weekends. So Tuesday through Thursday has always been considered the most reliable data.
So how do we take into consideration, looking at these numbers? The numbers are very inflated on the Sundays, Mondays, Fridays, and Saturdays. How do we take into account the traffic patterns, or how does that impact the traffic on the weekends?
The weekend traffic, as you know, fluctuates, fluctuates as well. I mean, that's something that we could certainly take a look at. If you look at those numbers specifically, even the highest ones are a fraction of what was used in the Burris report. So we would still argue that even if, even if we could all agree that the highest patient count that we were provided is more than norm, the impact would still be very low.
It would still be 25% of the numbers used in the Burris report. Currently, before you, staff's recommended hours are shorter than Ohio law allows, and the staff currently recommends that the dispensary not be open on Sunday.
Okay.
We would ask for reconsideration of that because it is useful to our patients, but I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. I have another question.
Okay.
Most of my questions will probably be towards, yeah. These trips do not take into account employees, is that correct?
No, they do.
They do take?
Oh, the patient count does not. That's only patients.
Okay.
Why we've, and like I said in my testimony, we're only using that to kind of give us a level of magnitude compared to the Burris report. Patients or customers, what we'd call them as traffic engineers, some will probably not all come, one per vehicle. So that won't, there probably won't be, you know, 75 patient vehicles. So the number will actually be down. But we have employees coming and going, we have deliveries coming and going, so it's probably, it's probably in the neighborhood. Now, the other, what, several times it was stated that none of our data was in there. The actual counts that were taken, which we, were also done by the same consultant he utilized, they're a national firm. So we also have video of the actual traffic counts, which includes everybody.
And those two, yeah, those two locations would include deliveries, employees, et cetera. Those are actual trips on and off-site.
Yeah. And those, that count data, you know, seems to support the patient numbers that we're getting.
So the count data that was taken is not based upon check-ins and check-outs? This is based upon actual traffic data that was collected at these sites?
Yeah, we put both in there, kind of as a, as a check, because we knew people would say, oh, you hand-pick locations, whatever. You know, so we got, we got patient data, which, you know, Harvest provided based on their check-ins, but then we also took actual traffic counts.
And are those traffic counts what's in Table Three? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, no, please, ask anything you wish.
Or are those the check-in, check-outs?
Let's see what Table Three is. Table Three is, is its title, daily patient counts.
So where are the, where is the data that supports the check-in, check-out, or the actual traffic count?
That's the AM, sorry, that's the AMP, peak hour generation.
Okay.
From actual counts on Page Three, Table One.
So that was only conducted at two facilities? Not?
Correct.
Correct.
The seven, okay. Okay.
And, you know, I, we're trying to provide more information rather than allow, if a question leaves to mind in the audience, why didn't you do all seven? That's an enormous undertaking within the last 30 days. We thought to do two that were of comparable size was a representative sample, and Mr. Gallagher then proportionally adjusted those.
Right, okay. I think that's all the questions I have in regards to the study. When you were taking into consideration the estimate of 75 patients, it has, I guess, were the other conditions, or the additional conditions that are not allowed in other, in Arizona, for example, or in Maryland, for example, that are now allowed here in Ohio, was that taken into consideration, that now there will be six additional conditions, for example?
No, because quite frankly, Maryland may have more. Quite frankly, you need to kind of just look at the totality of it. I thought it was an interesting point, to be honest with you, but as Mr. Kimbrough could say, medical marijuana statutes do vary by state. And so to kind of say, okay, there are six more, therefore you have to reduce it by that percentage, I don't think that would really computer equate. And in fact, we, you know, the, the points regarding the Phoenix market and dispensaries was interesting, but that too doesn't relate, given the enormous population of Phoenix versus what we're talking about in this three-county area.
And so what is the population that we're basing your estimates on? Are we still using the Beaver Creek population?
It's not based on population, because that doesn't really translate. It's instead based on actual patient visits spread across those seven locations. And actual traffic counts. I do believe we provide, in the affidavit, the actual population of those three counties. In the affidavit of Mr. Noack, I believe, we do describe the three-county population. If it's not Mr. Noack, then I misspoken, it's Mr. Gallagher. And in Mr. Gallagher's report.
Okay.
Which I, I'm going from memory, so I think they're between 28,000 and 45,000 countywide.
And I have another question in regards to the amount of prescriptions. So there was emphasis placed on this 90-day recommendation. Last time that the presentation, or last time you presented, last time you were before the commission, there was talk that some of the communities that you are serving will only have patients come in if they are a lower-income patient, for example, for a one-day prescription, or a week-long prescription, opposed to whatever's maximum allowed, so, for example, the 14-days or the 30-days. Is it feasible for someone to be able to afford the 90-day prescription? I mean, is that something that's actually going to be logical, I guess? And my question for that is, because a lot of your patients, I presume, are going to be elderly, are going to be those that potentially could be on social security or something of that nature. So is that something that's feasible for them?
For certain patients, yes, it is. And in fact, many of these conditions itemized in the law are chronic, continuing for years. So we think many people will take advantage of that, but we're not suggesting that that is in every, every customer occurrence. No, there will be fluctuations in the amount of time that people fill their recommendation for medicine. We're just pointing out that simply, here are actual counts in states that wouldn't even allow anywhere near a 90-day supply. If people do take advantage of it, which we think some segment of the population will, these, these counts may very well be too high.
Sorry, I'm looking through this list that I prepared earlier today, so forgive me.
You may have noticed, I don't mind standing in front of a microphone.
It's part of the profession.
Right.
I think that's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I'm sure you'll be back for a second helping. I'm going clockwise today.
All right. So Sam, this is for the applicant. There's a couple of questions that pop up. You stated just a few moments ago that, you know, population and density aren't, aren't relevant. But is that actually true? I mean, you're using square footage, and you're using other objective values to state what we're going to do, but, you know, do we take into account that there's 500,000 visitors a month to go to the green that is .4 miles away? Do we, how are you guys taking in that other non-objective information that's also relevant to this?
Well, that's why we provided more data rather than less. It's a good question, Commissioner Height, but what I would point out to you is that there are still, the green is an attraction, there's no question. It's a regional attraction, I've enjoyed it myself. But there are still several dispensaries in a relatively small area right around here will be. And then upwards of 10 within 20 miles, and we are designated for a very rural service area. I found the numbers per populations varying between 28,000 and 45,000. So we think that those absolutely do balance each other out. Plus, we tried to give you enough information to make an informed decision, but admittedly, I can't overwhelm you with all the various regional draws around each of these attractions, or each of these dispensaries in other states, including Rockville, Maryland, which is a very densely populated suburb of Washington, DC, which probably, if anything, is much more densely populated and could draw more than Beaver Creek, Ohio. So we tried to give you enough information to make an informed decision. Could we account for every single variable? We could not, but we think on balance, it's nowhere near the order of magnitude that was presented to you otherwise.
So, so I get that, right? But there's, there's going to be 60 dispensaries in all of Ohio, right? If, if the resident who was earlier saying there's 60 in Tucson, well, that drastically changes the amount of people in an area being serviced by your other, like, how many, how many Harvest facilities are there in Arizona?
In Arizona?
Seven.
Seven dispensaries in Arizona. And I would point out to you, and Harvest has firsthand experience with this, there are 60 in Phoenix now. There are, there are going to be 60 in Ohio to start, and I don't think that number's going to contract.
Understood, but so.
It hasn't in other states, it's grown.
So very quickly, while we're up here, you know, I was doing a little bit of math, right? There's, let's call it 200 dispensaries in Arizona, is that feasible?
120.
120.
120.
So 120, 120 dispensaries that service 7 million people. We have 11 and 1/2 million people in Ohio. You know, our, our persons per square mile are significantly higher. It's like 280 per square mile versus Arizona's 45. You talk about apples and baseballs. My feeling is, I don't, I don't know that taking a 2,400, 2,400-square-foot facility in Arizona, comparing it to a 2,900-square-foot facility in Dayton, Ohio, without taking in, so you did say, you know, 28,000 in Clark County, maybe, or Fayette, and then Clark was 44. Green County's 167,000.
Well.
So I mean, there are, and one of your reasonings was that all of our people are going to go to these other 10 dispensaries. Aren't they going to come here? I mean, is that not part of our traffic study, or something we should consider, that the people are going to come here and go to the green and pick up their stuff? I mean, I'm just asking.
Sure, no, they're good questions, and I'd like to address them. I think your, the comparison of Arizona to Ohio is apt because we're looking at metro areas there. You're right, there are vast areas of Arizona where no one lives, and they are not served by dispensaries. That's why they're concentrated in metro areas. I would say so too, out of the gates, there is a concentration in Montgomery County and Franklin County, which will draw people away from our dispensary. I'm not saying that people won't visit our dispensary, we hope that they do, but we think it's in line with our representative sample across seven locations, as well as two actual counts. So we tried to account for these types of things. You know, quite frankly, if you look at Page Seven of our brief, it's not as though we're Highland County with nothing else around for about an eight-county radius. Instead, there are options here, and for every dispensary location, I could point out to you probably some attraction that would draw people as well. Your point about the green is, is well-taken, and I think valid, but I don't think that it changes the analysis materially.
Okay. Just for clarification, so for everybody in the room, what, what is the number of people who go up and down Tonawanda, in and out, from both of your studies? It's roughly 300, 328 in one, and is that accurate at all?
Not in an hour. His, his count's in the back.
I'm talking about per day?
You need to come forward, to speak into the microphone. I can just tell you, I heard both Mr. McCote and Mr. Gallagher. While they didn't agree up on much, they both said the traffic on Tonawanda was minimal.
Sure, but I believe it was like 300, a little over 300?
I don't, I can't recall whether his data had a 24-hour count. I don't believe it did. I think he had peak hours as well.
And, and Mr. Gallagher went and observed those PM hours, and his, the rest of his team observed the AM hours, so they have actual observation.
It's in the, it's in the back of.
Okay, so, so in the back, you just, you did your analysis, you applied, you know, you did peak hours here and there, and then you did some kind of cost-estimating relationship. It's not really true, but you did some kind of estimate compared to those hours, or those residents going in, those people going in and out. You came up with a number. What is your daily traffic expectation for Tonawanda, based on what you, what you put together?
I did not estimate daily.
Okay. And Mr. Gallagher, if you have, or I'm sorry, Mr. Matco, if you have a second, can you, I believe yours is right in here, but I want to make sure I'm reading it correct.
Yes, the, the PM peak hour count was slightly over 100. The 24-hour count was not taken on Tonawanda.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I'm good for now. I just, I appreciate your time.
You done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving right along.
All right. So I guess my first question will be for Mr. Mormon, city engineer.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm sure you've read and studied both reports that have been presented.
Yes, I have.
Or had that opportunity. Can you tell me if you've seen any conflict, or discussed any of that conflict that you may have found between the two studies?
Sure, and, and as you heard tonight, there certainly are differences between the two studies. And I think part of that is, in standard for our industry, is when you do a traffic impact study, you often reference back to a book published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers to get the, the land use, to get your traffic generation rates to use in the study. However, in this case, I think both parties made their best efforts to get that data, even though that doesn't really exist in the manual, the ITE manual that everybody would really use. I know the report by CESO, they used what I think is the closest representation that's available in that manual, in their study. And I also think that Carpenter-Marty, they, they did their best to get actual real-world information to try to incorporate. So, you know, it's, again, it's just a matter of, this is just so new right now, that there's not really a set trip generation rate, I guess everybody's agreed on yet, which I think is, is a reason for the disparity partially between the two studies here. I'm sorry, you, if you would, go ahead, please, if you have another.
No, that, that was it. I just wanted to understand your opinion on, on the two reports.
Yeah, and, you know, I could also add that, you know, if you kind of go conservative, because obviously the report by CESO has, has higher trips than the, than the other, other report. So, you know, if you go on the conservative end, what I always look at, when I look at these, is what's going on during the, the peak hours, which is the heaviest travel period in the mornings and the heaviest period, travel period in the evenings. If you look at, again, at the CESO report, they're predicting an additional, again, I'm talking the Tonawanda Indian Ripple Road intersection, they're predicting an additional four cars making the southbound right turn in the morning, and additional five cars making eastbound left turn in the mornings. In the evenings, they're predicting nine more cars making that southbound right turn, and nine more cars making that eastbound left turn. And, you know, just for comparison's sake, you know, for Indian Ripple Road, going eastbound, it's about 2,000 vehicles in the peak travel period. Going westbound, it's a little bit more than 2,000 vehicles also during the PM peak period. So, you know, relatively speaking, it just, just my opinion, I think those are relatively small numbers in relation to everything else that's going on in that area. And I think, you know, there are some backups there, like the gentleman from CESO said, but, you know, I think that's more of a factor of what's going on with, with the signals out there and the congestion on Indian Ripple Road, which I think that what's going on with this new dispensary, I'm not sure really does a lot to either influence that one way or the other, just, just in my, my personal opinion.
All right, thank you. So I have a couple of questions for staff. If you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
All right, so in one of the conditions, there's discussion of lighting being turned off at 10 o'clock. Is there any source of lighting that you know of, or that you've experienced, that could be left on overnight to satisfy the security needs of the applicant, and satisfy not lighting up the neighborhood to upset the residents?
Yeah, what we've done in the past, and there's a note here, was we reiterated in Condition Number Five, that the minimum lighting levels need to be required, required by the State of Ohio, need to be adhered to at all times. And also, we, we did suggest that the lighting, and I think we discussed it last time, that the lighting in Condition Number Seven be reduced to 25% of their illumination levels, as opposed to 100% after closing. So we do also have a minimum foot candle for security, which I think is about .2 foot candles around entrances and sidewalks and the like. So we would suggest, I think we suggested or discussed that the light fixtures in the parking lot be turned down to 25% of the illumination, illumination levels after 10 PM.
All right, thank you. Just a second here, let me collect my thoughts. Could you tell me what the current requirement is? the 2,900 square foot footprint, what the required parking is for a business in the B2 use?
Sure, I mean, given some, obviously some of the testimony you've heard here today, there is no set category that's really been explored from a formula basis on parking for medical or recreational marijuana, neither one. But obviously, we're focused on medical, there is no formula, so we looked at the general retail. If you look at general retail, it's 25, one per 250 square feet, but a B2 also allows for restaurants, which is one spot per every 100 square feet of floor area, because it's more of an intensity of a use. So obviously, while we wouldn't issue, while we wouldn't, would, while we still would issue a permit for a restaurant there, because we don't have, it's just a use compliance permit, it's not a conditionally used, a conditional use requirement like it is for a medical marijuana dispensary, I don't think it would go there, just because physically, the restaurant wouldn't be able to park any of their patrons, so... But there is more intense uses in a B2 that would be permitted on the site than, than what we're looking at from a general retail standpoint of the 250, one per 250 square feet.
Okay. And then one more. One of the residents had a concern with what would happen if Harvest was to pull out of that location, and how the license ties to that location and things of that sort. Are you able to give me any more explanation on how that works with the transfer if they were to leave?
From what I understand, and Amy can interject at any point, but they, transfers are not eligible until you're open and operational at a current location. So even if there was discussion about finding a different location, they couldn't transfer their license until they were open and operable in an existing location. After that, I think there's a certain time period at which point you would pay, apply for a $50,000 transfer of a, of location to the state of Ohio. But again, you have to be open and operational before you can even apply for that transfer.
And I believe there's a certain timeframe that they'd have to be open. I think it's minimum of a year before they'd be able to be eligible to apply for transfer.
All right, thank you. I have one question for the applicant. All right, so one of the residents brought up how in your discussion last night that you would hold patient orientations in group format, somewhere up to 40 or 50, who knows? Due to the parking there, where would you intend to hold those types of orientations if it can't be at that facility?
I was part of that discussion and aware of it. We were quite honestly trying to explain how well-trained our staff is, how we inform the persons coming in for medical marijuana, how much information they'll be provided so they can make knowledgeable choices. I don't think we ever meant to intend or convey to that person that there would be 40 cars parked at this particular site. We were talking about what's been done in Arizona. Certainly, we can replicate that kind of training and orientation here, and I don't want to be presumptuous, but for instance, we had our forum last night at CI Beaver Hall, only, because we were trying to set it up, only to learn after the fact that the kind people at the Village at Green, a representative of whom came to the open forum, said, gee, maybe we would have let you have it here. So I'm not trying to be presumptuous, but if there was really that kind of demand, and maybe we hope there is, so that people are better educated, we would look for areas off-site.
So is it common practice for Harvest to do individual orientations or more in the group format, just generally speaking?
I'll let Dr. Trout speak to that, if that's okay. He directs that program in Arizona.
We do have new patient orientations at certain dispensaries that accommodate it. At the dispensaries that we do those new patient orientations, we've actually built out a classroom to hold those, and we have ample parking to, to take care of that. If we were going to, if the demand was there to do that type of new patient orientation, like you said, we would, we would look for some type of off-site place to do it. Otherwise, no, that consultation or interaction between the patient and the staff happens on a, on one person-by-person basis.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't think I have any further questions at this moment. Thank you.
Getting down, starting to run out of commissioners here.
All right. First of all, I want to apologize for my watch. It was supposed to vibrate and not ring, because that's apparently a thing nowadays, right? So I apologize for that. I did want to make a couple of comments about the traffic studies on both ends. They're both very, very flawed in their, in their thinking on both ends. Very selective data sets. Michigan and other closer states would have been better, I think, studies if we're looking at weather, climate, population density, the type of people that we have in those, those particular areas. And also, it'd be very helpful to get these 300-page reports, not in the morning, while I'm at work all day. So it would definitely help to get these a couple of days in advance, instead of having them dropped on us last second. I actually took half a day off just so I could read all these briefs, so I would appreciate to get those a little bit sooner. I got a couple of questions for the applicant. So let me ask a question as far as the state of Ohio. Has the state of Ohio put a moratorium on granting additional licenses within the state, or is that just the initial starting amount that the state has proffered?
They've granted the 60 locations. We've been provisionally licensed specifically for this location. I'm not aware of a specific prohibition on the pharmacy board expanding that area, and I'm not sure if Ms. Blankenship knows the answer to that currently.
I believe there is a date certain set by the state when they will start to consider new applications for new dispensaries.
Okay.
I'm not entirely sure when that date is. I want to say September of 2019, but that could have changed, or it could yet change.
So currently, under the regulatory environment, it'd be a 12-month period from today, I guess?
As it stands right now, the state is not, they won't be considering any more applications till at least a date certain, sometime, I believe, in 2019. If that date got pushed back, I would not be surprised.
Okay. Question, what would be the approximate cost of a 90-day supply? I know it's been brought up by a handful of people. I'm sure it varies depending on...
The product, the accessories, how it's, it can be vaporized, it can be vaped, it can be consumed, I think there's...
Give me a, give me a reasonable range of what a 90-day supply would cost an average patient.
Is there a way to approximate that?
I would, I want to be respectful of this question, but I do also want to back up your depiction, Ms. Blankenship, I believe is accurate as well. I don't remember what the date certain is. I will also tell you, you've got a legislature that's going to come in at the first of the year, and none of us want to try to predict what they might do as well to twist the dials on this. But, but I would presume that they will do something to twist the dials on this. It would be, it would be inconsistent with every other regulated state that a legislature not come in right after regulation and start making changes. So with respect to your how long's a piece of string question, it's difficult, it is really difficult to say, because we're, there's such a wide range of products. 90 days of a CBD-dominant topical with low dosage could be, you know, hundreds of dollars in a 90-day supply, whereas a THC-dominant product with a high concentration could be thousand, couple thousand dollars on a 90-day supply. So it's, it's a pretty, there's so many products now, there's so many different ways to, to deliver the medicine that it's, it's just really all over the place.
As well as varying dosage based upon the condition, so pegging what exactly is a 90-day supply is a generic term.
Completely understand, just like a drug would, depending on the milligram dosage would change. So absolutely understand, trying to lay the, the questions that have been asked as to, could somebody actually afford that? And I'm trying to understand what that range from a high to low perspective.
Smart aleck, but truthful answer, really small cost to really high cost.
Okay. Could you answer, why is the armed guard going to be there? Or, no, I'm sorry, why would there be a guard? Is that required by the state? Is that part of the regulation in the state?
There won't be. There won't be. I mean, there was reference to an armed guard. There will be, when, just like any commercial enterprise, when a, when an armored truck may come, obviously, to move cash. But there will be, and while we do believe our workforce serve as security personnel, that the term armed guard got thrown around tonight.
So let me rephrase, security, how, why is, is security required by the state? Or is that a, is that a function of the...
There are certainly security measures, including the surveillance that you discussed earlier with the planning director. I'm not aware of any requirement that there be an armed personnel on site.
No, we, I don't know where that has propagated from. There won't, there won't be, and it, and there won't be personnel there 24 hours a day. There'll be 24-hour monitoring of intrusion detection.
So when you say 24-hour monitoring, let me, let me ask, what does that mean? Do you have somebody on off-site that is monitoring the 24?
Yes, yes. Intrusion detection and all of the cameras and sensors, but I don't, I have the faintest idea where armed guard or 24-hour armed guard.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess the best way I could explain it so that I can understand it is, a chain pharmacy has some serious opioids in the back, and they don't have an armed guard and constant security surveillance, or security personnel. A compounding pharmacy likewise is typically run out of a medical office building with nowhere near those security measures.
Completely understand, like I said, I'm trying to answer some of the citizens' questions, because I can't ask them right.
I would carry that a step further, because I think it's, it's worth all of our information is that all of the products, regardless of their content, potency, or type of, of product, are all vaulted at night. So, you know, there's nothing that you could smash a truck into it and grab off of a shelf. You could grab the shelf, but it'll be empty.
Right.
All of that stuff, all goes into a vault at close.
I guess the last question I have is, how would the right only be constructed? Because I know how a proper right-out-only would be constructed, but we've had a lot of people ask, well, you'll just turn left anyways, but if they're constructed properly, you cannot turn left.
And that's why I suggested the, the condition, if it interests you that I did, that we work with your engineering and planning staff to determine the best way. I could present to you as a trial lawyer, here's a channelized right-out, and, you know, people may be able to jump that, I don't know.
I mean, if you want to lose your muffler, yes, you absolutely could jump it.
So I think that's the condition that I would suggest, that, that the applicant explore with staff the feasibility and possibility of a right-out-only. And certainly, we would agree to signage, et cetera. But as far as the physical barrier, I think that's probably better discussed at the staff.
I think I'm all good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner.
My turn. Okay, I have a couple, I have several questions for staff. Just, just to clarify things, who exactly chose the site for this? Was it the state or the applicant, or...
Well, it started with the applicant putting the, putting the site under contract and then submitting it to the state for consideration. Ultimately, the state awarded this location without input from the city. So it had to meet the minimum criteria established by the state, as has been mentioned before, the setbacks, the 500-foot setbacks from churches, schools, parks. Then there was four or five that we received applications, four initially, just saying the zoning was appropriate for the site, but we always put the caveat that it's still required a conditional use approval. The one was ruled out, I think, at Friendly's because of the, as was mentioned before, I think a one or one-foot encroachment we found into the St. Luke's property. But, so the state was really considering four locations, two were submitted. I think the Friendly's site was also Harvest's initial application, but then there was one on Dayton-Zina, one at Fifth Third Bank on CJ. But to answer your question, it was the state of Ohio, just who, in the pharmacy board, who selected this location.
Okay, so, so they did not ask for any input from the city?
Other than the form that we signed that the zoning was appropriate for the site.
Right.
Assuming conditional use approval.
Right, but just quote "appropriate," unquote, okay. Now, this is a conditional use for B2. If someone had come to you as planning staff with an idea to put a non-conditional use, but a, a permitted-use B2 into that, onto that site, would that go before planning commission?
No, it would be issued by permit.
It would be straight permit, so, and there are a number of more intensive uses...
That's correct.
That could be, that we would never see simply because it's already zoned.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So conceivably, somebody could put in a small restaurant as long as the parking spaces met.
Even then, we don't, again, we don't do a zoning certification letter, we do a use certification letter. So the use would, would not require them to have the parking, because it's an existing facility, so it's limited by the square footage of the building, and the uses are identified in the, in that zoning district, so there was no, there's no requirement to retroactively fit the site into the regulations, because it is approved for use for that zoning district. Now, is it likely that that would happen if there wasn't enough parking? No, they would, they wouldn't look, select, select that site. But as has been mentioned back in the 70s, I think this was a convenience store at one point. So there's, there could be a multitude of uses that would gone in there without planning commission's consideration, without public notice, with just being issued by permit as is outlined in the zoning code.
Okay. And if my memory serves me, that is, that was zone B2 long before that was, before the city was incorporated.
As far as I could tell, before we were incorporated.
Way grandfather.
Yeah, before we were incorporated as a city, it was B2 in the township days as well.
Just like some other, what appeared to be kind of odd zoning, like along Indian Ripple Road, the stores that have been there since the 40s that are grandfathered in.
That's correct.
Okay. The 12 parking spaces, is that customer parking? Do they have to, is there additional parking required for employees?
It was, on general retail, 250, one per 250 gross square feet is, includes employees and customers.
Employees and customers, so is, are 12 spaces enough?
According to their formula, that's, that's what we had to go by.
Okay.
It is, it requires 12 spots.
Okay. Now, from the security standpoint, obviously, we've already established there're not going to be any armed guards, and they're not going to be patrolling 24 hours a day. Have you received any, or have you asked for any input from the police department? Or do you have any, any feelings about, based on other communities in terms of security, in terms of increased crime or anything like that? And I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, the only thing I can tell you is, obviously, we, we communicate constantly with the police chief, and he's been made aware of this. He hasn't, he didn't submit any formal objections or anything to what's going on. And from a security standpoint, there isn't any open dispensaries in the state of Ohio yet, so it's hard to kind of gauge that from, within a state comparison, other than some of the, you know, you can find both ways on the internet. Yes, there is issues, no, there is not issues, you know, it's all, depends on what, who you believe from a credibility standpoint, because it's all, everything you look up, you can find both sides of the story. Some study's been conducted, it's harmful, some say it's beneficial, some say it's a security risk, some say it's not. I mean, you can find all those kind of bona fide reports on the internet from somebody. So we've looked, and I, I mean, we would, as they've testified under oath, they haven't had any security issues at any of their other facilities, and we kind of went by that.
Okay, thank you very much. I have just a couple of questions for, for the applicant. And I, these are kind of tangential to, to what we are actually looking at, but the questions came up from, from citizens, and we're here to represent them as best we can. One of the statements that was made was talking about marijuana causing traffic accidents. Are we talking about medical or recreational? Probably, our MD will probably want to talk to that. Does medical marijuana, or can it impair a driver?
Yes. Simple answer to that is yes. Marijuana, THC-dominant, with proper dosage in, you know, in any person's system, is going to cause a psychoactive effect that will impair driving. Dr. Trout shared with you one of the studies, and it's, it'd be in your, your leave behind, references what, what appears to be the fact that marijuana intoxicants tend to exercise better judgment if that is the only substance that they're, they're using at that, at that point, and drive less.
In other words, they know they're impaired.
Right.
Yeah. Whereas alcohol use, clearly with the number of DUI accidents and fatalities that we, we still tragically experience in, in the United States, folks aren't arriving at those same lucid decisions. The point that was made that, that I would like to clarify with respect to traffic incidents, whether that's, whether that's something as benign as speeding all the way up to a traffic fatality, that takes into account all drugged driving. So that's, that's a, that gets into a big spectrum of heroin and cocaine and crack and synthetic drugs. And when we look at the presence of THC in a person's bloodstream as a decedent, that is not testing or examining whether they were using it at the time, as, as those substances remain in our fatty tissues for up to 30 days. remain in our fatty tissues for up to 30 days.
And Dr. Trout is familiar with the study, he tells me, that was cited earlier. That study in no way says that marijuana is causing more accidents, but it is being detected more because it's being tested.
Okay, and that brings up another point, and I'm a little bit confused on this. I was reading an article about medical marijuana in Virginia. This was out of the Norfolk newspaper, and they're going through approximately the same thing we are here in Ohio. And according to this story, the THC, which is the intoxicant part, or a component.
Psychoactive part.
Right. Is not used in medical marijuana, but I'm just hearing you saying that there are, there are types of medicinal marijuana that do have THC in it.
Unequivocally.
Yes.
There are dozens of uses of THC for pain relief, for improving appetite, for, as an anti-inflammatory.
Anti-nausea.
I'm butchering this.
That's not the CBD, then?
Harvard sells both.
Yeah.
They will sell products without THC that lack any psychoactive element whatsoever. They will sell products with THC that have been found to have medicinal benefit.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
And with them jointly in the same product.
Okay.
You could find a product that would, would be balanced with CBD as well as THC.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gentlemen, Ms. Akers, second helpings.
Mr. Chair, can I correct something I said earlier?
Certainly.
I found the language in the code, and it's actually this month, September 8th of 2018, when the state shall start the process of evaluating the open dispensaries, the number of patients seeking to use medical marijuana, and determine whether more licenses should be awarded.
But since none of them have opened yet, they're running a little behind.
There is that.
Okay. Far away.
I do have a question. This is a little, really hasn't been mentioned, but do these dispensaries omit some type of aroma?
It's a good question. We were asked that yesterday evening. That has been problematic. I'm repeating what I heard last night, so why don't I let Mr. Kimbrough address it?
I say I ruined what a medical doctor said, so why don't you ruin what I said?
Oh, good point. So, no, that, early on, 20 years now, there's been legalized marijuana in some form in California. That was apparently problematic. It is something Harvest has tackled and does not experience problems with because of the filtration systems that they use in their dispensaries. So we say confidently, based on prior experience, there will be no outdoor odor whatsoever, and within the store, the filtration system takes care of that.
Okay.
Well played.
Thank you. My other question is, I guess, for Ms. Wilcox, really. Has she, or have you been able to appraise properties outside of the state? I know you said you're licensed in other states in regards to the dispensaries.
No, I have not. I'm licensed in four states, Ohio, Kentucky, Pennsylvania, and South Carolina, and I've appraised compound pharmacies and other medical buildings, but no dispensaries yet.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Gentlemen? Okay, I, it's decision time. I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PC 18-10 conditional use with the 18 exceptions, however, amending number seven. So I'm not sure how we do that.
So of the 18 conditions, you're seeking to amend condition number seven?
Correct.
I'll defer to Mr. McGrath on this.
It should be our standard, down to 25%, and foot candles off the property.
I would say the fixtures in the parking lot shall be reduced to 25% of illumination levels after 10:00 PM. So we'd kind of change that wording around in there.
And you want, would that automatically include the foot candles off, off property?
Yeah, there's zero foot candles.
Right, okay. So we don't actually need that in there?
And I misspoke. I would like to add a 19th condition, that the right-hand turn only out of the dispensary would be discussed with planning to satisfy however that needs to be satisfied.
Yeah, well, that probably should be the city engineer, because I know he's, he's going to want to look at that pretty, so it shall be reviewed with the city engineer.
So for the purpose of clarification, are you seeking to add a 19th condition that there shall be a right turn only, or that you seek that they work with staff to see if it's a feasible?
To work with staff to see if it's a feasible, there's a feasible way to include it in their exits.
Since it's chair, I can't add anything, but I will suggest to some of my fellow commissioners, and the, and my lawyer is, is cringing, we had discussed this last month, and that is on number six, about the privacy fence. When I was over there, there is an existing hedge, and I would like to see wording in here that the fence, the new fence be installed so that it does not affect the existing hedge, because we're not sure if the hedge belongs to that property, or if it belongs to the homeowner next door. But I don't want to lose that, I don't want him to lose that hedge, so he has to look at a blank fence.
We could change that number six to say, and it shall preserve the hedgerow on the shared property line.
Thank you.
Because, I mean, they may need to trim it, obviously, so.
Right.
Just preserve the.
But I don't want the hedge dug up to replace the fence.
Yeah, we can add that as, and at six.
So would we like to clarify?
I am seeking to potentially amend condition number 13 to change the hours of operation from 9:00 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
If I may, state law, state law allows us to be open till 9:00 PM. 7:00 PM is already truncating that immensely for people coming off of work, and especially since there are no Sunday hours currently permitted under staff's recommendation. I'm trying hard not to push back on anything here, but that one, we're already, we're already getting whacked down pretty good from what state law allows.
9:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
Trade you that for a Sunday.
Not going to happen, GI.
Don't know if you don't ask.
We would accept 9:00 to 7:00.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay.
13, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
Okay, before we ask for a second, would you, would our clerk please read back the changes to the three? Did you get them, or am I putting you on the spot?
Would the clerk like me to read back the changes?
No, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Jeff, jump in here if I misspeak on number seven. So you're looking to approve it, the motion is to approve with 19 conditions. As the, as the conditions are drafted in the packet, we are tweaking condition number six to include preservation of a hedgerow. Condition number seven, to say that the levels shall be reduced to 25% after 10:00 PM. Is that right, Mr. McGrath?
Yep.
Number 13, hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. With an additional condition of number 19, that the applicant will work with city staff and attempt to determine the feasibility of a right-hand turn only exit.
So, I mean, on that 19th, can we firm it up with a may or a will and not a shall? Or is it just best to leave it like this?
As it was presented, it was presented that the applicant should work with staff to determine the feasibility.
Is that solid enough?
Change it to shall work with staff, please.
Sure.
Is that what you want?
No, I was just saying, I want them to put it in.
Oh, you want, so you want the shall.
Kind of look at it. I think you may, will, shall, right? Not just look at it.
So shall put in the term.
We just want to make sure where our engineer looks at, we don't want to have that cause any anticipated negative effects, for example, coming out of, right out of the property and then going right into the CPA's lot and turning back around and coming back out.
Yeah, so, again, so maybe it says, you know, review with city planners and if feasible, install.
Yeah, okay.
You know, just, just firm it up a little bit, as long as it is plausible, let's do it, I guess is where I'm going.
That's fine.
So shall install the curb so long as?
The way we have it right now, so that, so that city staff is put in a position where they're faced something that's untenable, is that the applicant shall work with staff to determine whether it's feasible to put a right-hand turn that way.
I'm good, good, all right.
All right, we have a motion, but I need a second.
Mr. Chair, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else, any comments before we vote? Call the roll.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Seau?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And since we've been going for three and a half hours now, we're going to take a five-minute break before the poor souls that have been waiting all evening for the other three public hearings. And we are back again, and my apologies to the folks who are here for the three remaining public hearings and the subdivision. So without further ado, let's go to PUD 97-1, mod 818.
This is case number of PUD 97-1, mod 8 of 18, on an application filed by Al Meyer, 302 West Third Street, Suite 800, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. The application requests a major modification for 8.26 acres of land to allow for the construction of a medical office building. The property is located on the south side of Lakeview Drive, approximately 200 feet east of North Fairfield Road. Further described as Book Four, Page Six, part of Parcel 116 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I'm sure there's someone here representing the applicant. Same procedures as previously, we'll hear from the applicant, we'll hear from the staff report, we'll open the public hearing to public input, then commissioners will decide.
David Marshall, I'm with the Clintries Group, 409 East Monument Avenue, Dayton, Ohio. Just want to let everyone know, be respectful of everybody's time. We've gone through the staff report, we're proposing a medical office building and, and the site proposed, and basically here to answer any questions staff or planning commission may have.
Super, thank you.
This application we're reviewing this evening, presenting to you is a major modification to an originally approved specific site plan. Some of you may be aware that originally approved specific site plan was legislated by referendum and a settlement of that referendum between the city of Beaver Creek and the Lofino family, with significant input from the neighbors on El Cid in that mediation process. The zoning currently in place was, was adopted again in 2000, the initial application for rezoning was in 1997. What we're looking at this evening would be considered in the existing legislation anchor of what was a previously approved larger retail center. So we think, as we've mentioned in the past, going to more users as opposed to more, or more consumers as opposed to more competition, especially when the layout from the 1997 concept, the 2000 concept is kind of antiquated at this point, from the big box retail standpoint, and some of those super centers or mega centers you see in some of those areas, we, we really were encouraging, it's been a goal of ours with planning, city council for a long time, it was an objective of our department to look at these old PUDs and try to diversify those, or revisit those old PUDs and see if we can come up with different types of uses that, again, is maybe more sustainable as we move into the future. So where we are this evening, I think, is a good step in that, in the right direction there. There were significant requirements on the zoning. As you may be familiar, there's an existing mound in this location that will remain. The setback requirements are all adhered to as a result of the, of the settlement. You may notice on the condition, the last condition does require that there be some kind of an amendment approved by the, by the judge on the height, because as we get to this, the required height limitation, I mean, I'm sorry, there was a, in the conditions, just to mention this before I forget, it says 35 feet, but the actual maximum height was 33 feet, so it needs to be amended to allow for that height to go above 33, not 35 feet. But it is a two-story building, so you can see most of the, most of the building is, is in compliance with the height regulations, it's a lot lower intensity of use, so there were some regulations related to, related to docking areas, more in line with what you would anticipate with what a grocery store was going to be there. So if you look Kroger, you got their loading areas, their docks, those were all specified, those weren't really relevant as a result of what we're looking at this evening. The only thing they do need is, is a, an amendment to that settlement to allow for the accent feature, which is that atrium area. Here, that's the glass feature, it's more of an architectural accent than it is a functional portion of the building, so it's their lobby area. That does exceed above the 33 feet, so we would have to get the, the judge to allow for that amendment to, to the settlement for that to occur. As far as the site goes, well, here, this gives you a better idea of the overall scale of the building. So this was rendering that was actually in the paper this morning. So this, this gives you an idea of what the building will look like. It was labeled as Beaver Creek location, but you can see how this really isn't a functional part, it's more of an accent feature, so it's nothing, nothing that will be occupied that would look over the mound, or anything that would infringe upon anybody in the backyards of those areas, pretty significant distance away. But access and transportation, you can see here, this is the access drive that runs right behind the Chick-fil-A, the city barbecue, and the Grater's ice cream. They're proposing to have an access come off of this access drive with no access onto Lakeview. There were provisions for signage in order to direct people into the site, and as you may have seen, if I can find it on the site plan, also, the, the design for what could be needed in the future for a second access, to kind of have that traffic flow circulate throughout the site as opposed to concentrating it on one location. This does line up with the Chick-fil-A access, and this does line up with the city barbecue and Grater's access, so they are in alignment with the, the ingress and egress points on the, on the west side of the, of the access drive as well. From a parking standpoint, originally, when this was brought to our attention, we weren't sure, we looked at it from an office standpoint as opposed to a medical office, the user wasn't disclosed, or the type of user wasn't disclosed, but we do know it's a medical office at this point. But they did show on office calculation basis, they're required to have 131 spots, of which they provided 242. So we feel comfortable that even if, even with the exam room requirements, the changes is a little bit with the medical office, that they will still be sufficiently parked with the 100, extra 111 parking spots that they have provided as it related to a regular office building. As you can see, there are four-sided architectural features on the building. We think it's an attractive building, will fit in well in that area. There are a few requirements on the, on the light poles with the full cutoff features, and in the conditions, you'll see requirements for, let's see here, the mound, especially want to mention the mound, because right now, this is the only portion of the mound that they would control on this eight-acre portion that they're carving out of the site. We did put a condition that they go in and provide a plan that's approved by staff on how that mound would be treated, and we went a step farther and say the owner of the mound to the, what will be to the south of this lot, also matched that design and plan within six weeks of this plan being implemented, the one we approved for this site, since the owner authored, they still own the property, so they are vested in this application, so we do have some leverage to require that to happen. So we wanted the mound to look consistent, but only wanted any requirements tied to this application to be there, on their portion of the mound that they're purchasing. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And since this is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing to anyone who wishes to speak. Don't be shy.
You know I will.
You got it.
Let me read that thing I raised my hand a while ago.
No, you raised your hand a while ago, that's all right. That counts for the whole evening.
Okay, good. I'm Bob Gobel, living 2327 El Cid, which is right beyond the mound there. And I think this has been a long time, long road, finally, we got something that fits. And I'm thankful for that. Fits the staff, had to get a good job. I think, well, when you read the conditions, you said something about you're going to have the sidewalk, right? So the sidewalk is in here, too. So it looks good. Only thing I thought was, in the parking, the depiction at least has very few handicapped parking places, and they're all around the side instead of the end of the front of the building. So I'd like for you to look at the consideration of more handicaps, especially since it's going to be a medical building, and the, the closest parking places aren't building, and the closest parking places aren't handicap spots. I didn't, I'd like to talk about drainage a little bit. We've got a beautiful detention pond, and I didn't know how the drainage is going to work on this, since the rest of it's not developed, because it's going to run over there into mud. And so I don't know, is there going to be drains that goes into the big pipe that goes into the retention, detention pond? You mentioned that they're going to own the mound, and you're going to dictate what they do to the mound. Is that going to be both sides? And also, that dictation is going to carry forth, you said, within a certain period of time, that the owner has to maintain the rest of the mound the same way. And thank goodness we're finally here. I recommend you approve that.
Thank you. We go back to 1997, to the original one, don't we? Okay. Others? Other folks like to speak on this. Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Did we have any written input?
No.
No written input. Okay. Let me see. Who do I, oh, keep going clockwise.
For the applicant, just in regard to his accessible parking spots, is that something you guys can look into? It says 10 spots out of the two, whatever, it's 242.
Right.
Is there a possibility of recording some of it?
We showed ADA compliant parking spaces and ADA compliant number. City Beaver Creek requires ADA plus three, so there will be three additional spots on our site plan in the final form. The spots were placed on the side, so as opposed to in the front, to preserve having to cross traffic to get to the front. That's why they're on the side. Now, with the plus three, we'll probably have to add the three out front, because we get too remote, and then the spaces that are out front are closer to the front door, so there will be a few spaces that need to cross. As far as drainage goes, there is existing storm system piping in the ground that we're going to be connecting into, so it won't be sheeted over the mud to the pond, it'll be drained directly into it. So, thank you very much.
I have no questions.
Excellent.
Just got one quick question for staff, please. Condition number seven, the access road, we're asking them to come over and mill and put a final course of asphalt over there. Do we need to add a condition that they're in charge of perpetual maintenance for that access road? Because we know how well those roads have been maintained by other Laffino properties.
They are by, they are by the fact that they own it. You know, so I mean, if you look, the property boundary does go past it, which is something that they'll have to maintain. And our hope is, eventually, that this whole, when this area develops, that there's a, kind of like an association or an agreement in place there, everybody pays somebody, and it's a communal, not an individual, basis-by-basis maintenance, but right now, the fact that they own it would be required for them to maintain it.
Well, I guess, so help me understand then, why we have Laffino, why we have some of those other properties that are perpetual.
We've got, well, obviously, you know, they put in the base, they never put in the final code of asphalt, or course of asphalt, because it was still under construction, supposedly. So the base has deteriorated, and then, you know, the asphalt plants are only open certain periods of the year, and they schedule those, but, you know, right when they get open, so it takes a while to get those potholes patched, and then the next year, we're doing it all over again. So with this, we're looking curb, sidewalk, final course of pavement, so it should be something that won't be a perpetual problem.
Okay, and this is a new access road that they're putting in, then, right?
It's there, but they'll, they're gonna, it'll be fixed.
Okay, but just the final course then?
Yeah, curb, I mean, they'll have to put curb and everything on that side as well. I mean, it's, right now, it's just a grass or gravel area.
Would it place an undue burden, or make your jobs harder, if I added just the perpetual maintenance, just to put that language in there, as the, we'd be responsible for perpetual maintenance in accordance with the city's
Yeah, that's fine.
standards, or whatever, something like that. So again, we don't end up with a pothole-ridden road, or maybe
Yeah.
I'd ask the applicant the same question, who thinks that places an undue burden on?
Not to, I guess reassure the city, there is an existing REA, Recyclable Easement Agreement, that has provisions in there for joint maintenance of the road. So there is something that's already in place between all the property owners. The fact that it hasn't been maintained has been a result of the fact that there's nothing on the main acreage there. Now, with us being there, that we're going to insist that it be maintained.
Yeah, we're saying, being decided you would.
Being the anchor, so.
I don't believe it up to staff, I guess, at this point, what your recommendation would be, like, to, as far as that, if we do or don't need to add that clause. I'm just trying to make sure that road
I mean, as long as you can say it's maintained in perpetuity, that's fine, whether that's, whatever instrument they use for that is fine. It's, it could be an REA agreement, it could be them, but.
That's all I have. I think this is, this is great, I'm glad we're using that piece of land. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
I have nothing. Mr. Loftus, address my concerns.
Microphone. Just to make sure, the front of the building with the portico and so forth will face Lakewood, is that correct?
Lakeview, correct.
Oh, Lakeview, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there.
Is that, it looks all for the world like a giant garage door on the very left edge. I'm sure it isn't. It'd be a really tall ambulance, that.
I think those are just windows, right? Yeah.
Okay, it just looks like a really big garage door. Just wanted to make sure. I didn't think there would be ambulance service out of there. Lovely building, and I guess third time is the charm on this, because this is the third one we've heard on this site, so you better build it. Okay, I need, anything else? Any second helpings, gentlemen, Ms. Akers? I need a, I need a motion, then.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve PUD 97-1 mod 818 with additional language added to Condition Seven, that just addresses a perpetual maintenance.
Okay. I thought we were, I thought they were looking to get the two extra feet added by the judge.
Yeah, it said originally it was 30.
Building to exceed the maximum 33 feet, the lawsuit actually said, the settlement said 33, not 35.
Right.
So it says, to allow for the accent feature on the building to exceed the maximum, it's actually 33 feet.
Okay.
33-foot height requirement, so I think it's going to be about 39 or 40 feet, when that accent feature will be about 39 feet tall.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just for accuracy, to reflect what was actually in place right now, it's a 33-foot maximum, not a 35 right now.
Okay. With the additional language to it.
Okay, I have a motion, I think.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that.
Okay, and we're all clear on it? Okay, Holissa, can you read the roll, please?
Ms. Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five zero, and we're tickled to death to have something built there that really looks nice. Presuming you build it better. Okay. We are down to our third public hearing. This is 08-1, Specific Site Plan Number Two.
This is case number 08-1, Specific Site Plan Number Two, on an application filed by Hitten Patel, 1032 Deer Creek Drive, Fairborn, Ohio, 45324. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a 9,400-square-foot religious education center on 3.002 acres of land. The property is located on the west side of Glenbrook Drive and north of Crestmont Court. Property is further described as Book Four, Page Four, Parcel 29 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume there is someone here for the applicant?
My name is Stephen Butler, I'm with Community Civil Engineers, representing the applicant tonight. The applicant is also here, Mr. Hitten Patel and Mr. Vence Swaminathan, to answer any questions. We're really excited to be coming to the community with the youth group Indian Culture Center. I will pass it over and let staff make their presentation, and any questions, just ask us.
Thank you. Boy, I love these quick presentations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The case we have before you is PUD 08-1, it's Specific Site Plan Number Two. It's the Youth Group for Indian Culture Specific Site Plan. What the applicant's requesting is a approval for the construction of a religious education center on about three acres. Project's located in northern Beaver Creek, it's to the west of the, I'm sorry, to the east of the shopping center. There's, it contains the Target and the Kohl's, and then ultimately, several other smaller stores to the east. To the north is the Puja Hall, which is owned by the Hindu community, and then there's the Hindu temple to the north of that. To the south is multifamily residential, which is also to the east. The project was recently rezoned and added into the CPUD earlier this year by City Council for the purpose of creating an educational facility. So what they're asking for in their specific site plan does meet the uses, as well as the setbacks and buffers required in the ordinance that was approved earlier this year. Seen here is the proposed specific site plan. As you can notice, they're using the majority, well, the majority of their site plan is on the eastern half of the PUD, or this actual three-acre parcel, and then to the west will be, stay in its current form. We did have them reangle the building a little bit, in case in the future they do want to use some of this western portion of the PUD, this portion of the lot, there is room to get a access drive behind the building, rather than trying to create a second access point on Lilian Lane. So there was a little bit of, that's why the building is slightly angled this way, rather than more oriented towards Lilian Lane, so just to give you history on that. Based on their proposed building, we didn't have an actual use that specifically said religious education, so for, in terms of parking, we looked at what an elementary school would be required, which is two parking spaces for each classroom. Based on their, the floor plan that we were given, they're required to have 12 spots, they provide 15, so they do meet the minimum parking requirements. There was no lighting plan included with your application, but we did add conditions in the proposed resolution that says any light pole within 100 feet of any of the residential buildings cannot be more than 16 feet tall. We do that when we're adjacent to any residential, as a, is a way to limit the amount of light that the neighbors would see. So that is a condition. Also, the light poles be outside of any parking area, actually be on the perimeter or on the interior island, so that there's no, you know, running into the light pole bases and stuff like that. And that foot candles be reduced, as we discussed earlier with the previous application. One of the, also another condition we added, in the future, should there be a desire to connect, there wasn't with this application, because these are actually two separate owners, so we couldn't require them to connect to the property to the north, but should there be a desire or the necessity to connect, we wanted to have an easement, construction and access easement. That's just going to be on a legal document, there's not going to be any kind of construction or anything like that, the parking lot will be as it appears here. Seen here is the architectural elevations. The building's 188 feet long, 52 feet deep, and about 20 feet to the midpoint of the pitched roof. It's going to be, it's proposed as a majority brick building with a tan Ephesus accent, as well as tan split face blocks. In terms of signage, they're proposing a medallion on the southwest corner of the building, as well as a small medallion on the north, I'm sorry, the southeast corner, as well as on the northeast corner. The architectural features wrap the entire building. They do include landscaping around the perimeter of the building. We had them add landscaping along Lilian Lane, as well as move the building away from the sidewalk, so that there could be the addition of base landscaping, so that there is a divide between actual parking lot and the building itself. If they require, if they need a future ground sign, which there is none in this application, we limit it to five feet in height, with the brick base that matches the building, and 25 square feet per sign face. There are 22 conditions in your application for your consideration. Staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request, and I'm happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding this particular application? Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Did we get any written input?
No.
No written input. Let me see, we're starting clockwise, so you're up.
No questions.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay.
My only question for staff is, in the, in between the sidewalk and the building, where you left room for the landscaping, I know the landscaping plan has to be approved. Are we going to require there to be landscaping or something in there?
What they show is some, some more, you know, non-seasonal, so some permanent bushes and shrubs here and here, and then they're proposing seasonal flowers to be added, so they do show it, and, you know, we'll bond it and everything else like that.
Okay. No questions, thanks.
Mr. Chair, no questions.
I only have one, and this is for the applicant, and that is, could you characterize the age of the young folks that will be attending this particular building? You need to come up, I'm sorry, you need to come up to the microphone. The TV audience wants to hear you.
Okay, thank you. Basically, the age group we're looking at at this point is kids going, attending the first grade till ninth, ninth grade.
Okay, so younger than driving age?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is the size of the parking lot. If these are teenagers, some of them are going to have cars, and the lot may be too small.
Ah, no, we don't have any, any of the kids driving.
That's the only, my only concern. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second helpings, gentlemen, Ms. Akers? Okay, I need a motion.
I motion to approve PUD 08-1 SSP Number Two, with the 22 attached conditions.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments before we vote? Good roll.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. We're looking forward to another nice building in your complex there.
Thank you.
We're getting dangerously close to the end here, folks. PUD 18-3, our fourth public hearing.
This is case number PUD 18-3, on an application filed by Franklin Land Associates, LLC, 9010 Overlook Boulevard, Brentwood, Tennessee, 37027. The application requests approval to rezone approximately 3.5 acres from R1A1 Family Residential District and B2 Community Business District to a CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development. The property is located at 3867 Dayton Xenia Road, further described as Book Two, Page 11, Parcells 140, 141, 144, 145, and 146 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gage, I'm with GBT Realty. We are out of Nashville, Tennessee. We are looking at this proposed site as a potential Dollar General location. This is three and a half acres. It is currently cut up into five different parcels that are under the same tax parcel. We do plan to combine everything into one parcel, construct a 9,100-square-foot store with 36 parking spaces, associated drives, stormwater detention, and utilities. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case you have before you is PUD 18-3, it's a Dollar General rezoning. It's a Dollar General rezoning. As the applicant stated, they're looking to rezone about three and a half acres from partially R1A and partially B2 to a CPUD to construct a retail store. Project's located in central Beaver Creek, about a quarter-mile east of the intersection of Grange Hall Road and Dayton Zine Road. These are the five separate parcels that they're looking to rezone. To the north is the Beaver Creek Senior Center. There's a...residentials to the west and to the south, and then this is an auto repair and part-time sales facility here to the northeast. Again, these are the five parcels. You can see the parcels along the northern portion, as well as...as well as towards the middle, are zone B2 for commercial, and then there's an R1A portion to the south, as well as also this is R1A. The land use plan calls for the majority of the site to be...it's a kind of a combination between community commercial, as well as community office, and then the small portion is R1...is single-family dwelling residential. But, you know, there is caveats in the land use plan that states, you know, the areas are transitional areas, just because it states, you know, low-density, single-family. I mean, it is majority within this community commercial and office. So, you know, the rezoning to a CPUD, you know, is compatible with the land use plan. It's also within a Dayton Zine planning area as an overlay, so even if they went straight rezoning, they would have to come through the ASRA process to get a site plan. And just for some clarification, you know, this is a PUD again. This is a two-stage process, so what we're here this evening is going over some legislative issues. Should this be approved ultimately by city council, then they'll be back in front of this board with a specific site plan that we'd go over, the architectural elevations and the drainage and the parking and landscaping, lighting, and the like. So, this...what they did provide is a generalized concept plan. You know, it's a little bit more specific than what we would normally see in a concept plan, but it did show some setbacks from Dayton Zine Road, as well as some buffering, because we do want to buffer the single-family residential to the south and to the west. In terms of...just to make it more clear, you know, this is where we would...we're looking for a 50-foot buffer, is between the blue, which is the outline of the proposed PUD, and the red, which delineates the 50 feet, and then the future right-of-way along Dayton Zine Road, because as planning commission may be aware, that there is a project or finished Dayton Zine, we've got the two booked in. So, in the next couple of years, we'll be doing the same to this portion of Dayton Zine Road. So, we wanted to call that as a future right-of-way and not make it 70 feet from the existing, but rather 40 feet from the future right-of-way. In terms of some legislative issues, what we're looking at as proposed uses are the B2 uses. You know, majority of the properties now are allowed as B2. Again, we want to...but we are able to, you know, delineate some setbacks. Among the 136 different uses allowed in the B2, convenience stores is one, which is what we'd consider Dollar General, but there's others, several other uses. Again, we were looking at a 40-foot buffer, or 40-foot building setback, 50-foot buffer, and the access points subject to approval at specific site plan. One thing we did want to look at, and I know that their concept plan didn't show this, but we want to look at the potential of getting an access drive out to Lake...I'm sorry, Longview, and making that an exit-only, because if you...there's a dead end, and this end is Lakeview or Longview, so nobody would turn right other than those that live there. But we do want to try to get people to access to a slight, to minimize the number of left turns out. Not to say that we would not want to see a left out from this point, but we do want to utilize access to lights if we can. There are five conditions in the application or in the resolution for your consideration. Staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request, and I'm here to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you. The usual...our usual very comprehensive staff report. Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Don't be shy. We're running out of people, but... Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Was there any written input?
No.
No written input. Okay, I'm just going to throw this open, folks. Questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, remember, we're just rezoning now. We're not looking at the site plan. That comes later. Okay, so this is a straight rezoning case to a PUD, to a CPUD. I presume, staff, that with the specific site plan, we'll get the lot recombination? Or is that part of this?
That'll be one of the...that'll be one of the...anticipated as one of the conditions, should a specific site plan be provided.
Okay.
We want to get this cleaned up and make sure that it's...that we're not putting buildings across property lines and driveways.
And particularly the landlocked parcel, too.
Right. We...no, we wouldn't want to have that, and it's just a lot cleaner and...
But that will come at specific site plan.
That is correct. Yeah, we don't want to make them do that now, because we don't...we don't know exactly how the site plan is going to lay out.
Okay. Sounds good. I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 18-3 with the associated five conditions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
And I have a second. And we'll be real formal and read the roll.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. See, it was worth the wait. We'll be looking for that specific site plan. We have one more item, and that is a subdivision, S18-4.
As the chairman asked from before, when we go through...for that last project, when we do go through specific site plans, we do require, if it's unplatted, that we get the area platted. And this...this particular record plan is from an application that planning commission may remember. A few months ago, the Piano Preparatory School at Grange Hall and Indian Ripple are looking to build, and one of the conditions was that they get that platted. And because it's not platted, and we can't do that unilaterally as staff, we were looking to get the planning commission approval to create a final subdivision called Phoenix, intentionally spelled with an O. When I looked at it, I was questioning that, but there's some trademark issues with Phoenix Investments, LLC. So, you know, we'll be looking to get this platted. We're also going to be looking to get an easement. Before we get it recorded, before we release the plat, you know, we're going to see...want to make sure that they have a perpetual easement over top of the pond, because as planning commission may remember, you know, the detention pond for this site is actually they're using the one that burns, and so before they could do it, they...before they could build, they have to show that they can actually use that detention pond, and that's just going to be one of the...one of the requirements. So, we didn't need to go as far as requiring that as a condition, but just wanted to let planning commission know. But there are three conditions in your staff report for your approval, and staff, again, is recommending approval, subject to any questions.
This is one of these cleanup items.
Right.
Any comments or questions, gentlemen?
Unless anybody wants to stay for a couple more hours, maybe?
No, no.
Have you ordered pizza yet?
It's on its way. Just kidding, that's one thing.
Folks, we're not even close to the record, so no sense in staying. Considering they're already started construction, I think we're good to go here.
As of this morning?
They've been pushing dirt around.
Right, right. Yeah, we usually get that.
Okay. No comments, questions? This is...this is a no-brainer, I think, so I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case S18-4 with the attached five...three conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, second.
I have a second, and we'll be formal and read the rolls, just for fun.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And being fresh out of items, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I would move to adjourn, please.
I would second that, please.
And we will do that by general departure. We are adjourned at 1018.